Man, we're good.
Okay, we're gonna begin with the Pledge of the Flag called by moment of silence, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. Under the political which stands. Under. 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 All. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Your vote?
Here.
Mr. McInley?
Present.
All present?
Thank you. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement of majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Howe, do you make that motion?
So moved, yes.
Do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Yes, Sheila.
Ms. Sedman? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Unheard, motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Mr. McInley, do we still need that since how they lifted the state of emergency?
Uh, we still need it according to CDC guidelines. I'm hopeful that by next week, maybe that'll be removed, but currently I think we're still in, we need to comply with that.
Okay.
The 28th, I think, is the date that we're hoping for. Uh, but do I need a mo- I need a motion now?
So moved.
Who's that, Leanne?
Yes.
Do we have a second for Leanne?
Chris.
Chris Perry? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Yes, Mr. Griffith.
In opposition, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. This, the first public hearing is in regards to the amendment for the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County Drug and Alcohol. There's a grant that's been forward for our drug and alcohol programs, $20,168. And that would be incorporated into the budget under drug and alcohol. This, if, we're now open for members of the public to comment in regards to this grant that has been submitted for drug and alcohol. Anyone from the public who would like to comment on this budget amendment? Very none. Do we have a motion for an adjournment?
Present.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. McDermott. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. We have a second public hearing scheduled at 5:50, which is four minutes from right now. So hang on to this team's meeting and then we'll move to the next public hearing at 5:50.
Fred's new mail up to, that's the area, that's to 911.
Okay.
Evans Falls and.
Okay, good.
Budgets from the two authors.
Good. Okay, it's now 5:50. And we'll call the meeting to order. We've already done the pledge and a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Pause.
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McInley?
Present.
All present?
Thank you. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement, the majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Howe, do you make that motion?
Yes, so moved.
Ms. Howe? Do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Motion to suspend bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Statement, do we have a second for Ms. Sedman?
Second, Kendra.
Radel? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Yes, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? Motion carries. This is a public comment on a proposed ordinance that amends the Luzerne County zoning map, the rezone. Three parcels of property totaling 6.51 acres in Union Township from HB, which is Highway Business District, AG Agricultural District, and R1, which is single-family residence, to HB Highway Business District and AG Agricultural District zones. It is now open for members of the public to comment in regards to this proposed ordinance amendment.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raibro speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raibro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a general zoning question with regards to this zoning change. Um, in terms of, uh, this being changed from a agricultural to a, I believe it's a highway business district, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're.
I would like to know the answer.
Get this correct. It was highway business district, agriculture, and R1, single-family residence. It goes, it still goes to highway business district, agricultural. The only thing that was removed was the single-family residence.
Okay, uh, with pertaining to that single-family residence that's removed, uh, if there is any single-family residence within those, uh, or bordering those zones, do the property owners, do the homeowners have recourse in regards to, uh, any kind of, uh, or latitude with regards to a buffer zone that would be able to, uh, they would still be able to utilize their properties however they wish to without, uh, or without encroaching onto those uh, new zones or vice versa, or those business, those newly established lines going into that single-family residence that was eliminated, uh, now that's, uh, gonna be utilized by those businesses in those new zones. So that's my question.
Okay. And we'll address that when we get to the ordinance. Any other members of the public? If not, may I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved, Leanne.
Mr. McDermott, do we have a second?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Howe? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Uh, 6:01 would be the start of the voting session, so we have approximately seven minutes. Okay, it's now 6:01. We're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna begin with a pledge of the flag followed by a moment of silence, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States.
Go ahead.
Under the public which stands. Under. Under. Moment of silence, please. Roll call.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Yes, here.
Ms. McDermott?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McInley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. We have two recognitions tonight. Perry L. Joyce, retired and aging care man to. Gloria A. Wolfher, he's a 12th and Pref就这么 office. We wish them well in their retirement, good health and happiness as they go forward with their new careers. Uh, before we get to the additions and deletions, Mr. Dulca, do you want to comment about the executive session, please? Mr. Dulca, I think you might be, uh, your microphone. Is your microphone open, Mr. Dulca? I can't hear you, Mr. Dulca. Your microphone must be muted. Seems to be open now. But I don't hear you.
About now.
Now we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Uh, council, council met an executive session from 5:00 PM until approximately 5:30 PM. Uh, and, uh, received a report from the chief solicitor regarding two litigation matters. Uh, Luzerne County, Musco versus Luzerne County, uh, and Javits versus Luzerne County. Javits versus Luzerne County is case number three dash, three colon, 15, CV 2443, uh, and also discussed potential litigation.
Okay. Thank you. Additions or deletions from the voting session agenda?
Uh, Mr. McInley, I, I would like to delete item number two from the agenda, please.
Item number two, which is the resolution establishing a property assess clean energy program?
Yes. There's, there's a, uh, an abundance of information that needs to be vetted prior to council taking action on that that we were not able to get accomplished at our work session. Um, there was a, there's a whole host of questions that I have as one council member, but, uh, I'm sure I sent some email to council just a little while ago about some issues that we need to be aware of before we just blanketly adopt that issue. So I'd like to have that taken off the agenda if the council so desires.
Okay. Council members, what's your desire?
This is Steve Urban. I would concur with that as well. Um, since it may require that tax collectors do an additional work.
Okay. Anyone else? Is anybody against the moving it from the agenda at this point?
I mean, if you want, if you want, Mr. McInley, we could just swing it over to the work session. We could discuss it some more over there if you'd like.
Well, and, and when we get to the work session, we can consider that. Let's.
Okay.
More worried about what time we'll be getting there and.
Gotcha.
Certainly, uh, it seems like there's no issues in, in regards to not dealing with it this evening. And number six is a motion to adopt or approve a settlement with the, uh, Richard Musco versus Wilkesboro, Alming Valley Airport, Valley Aviation, Luzerne County, and that will also be removed due to, uh, some more information needed. So at this point, agenda item two and six would not be on the agenda for this evening. Okay? Anybody have issues with that? Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda with those two corrections?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Urban got in there, I think. All in favor, adopt the agenda. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement, majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Howe, do you make that motion?
Yes, so moved.
Do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Unheard, motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Chris.
Mr. Perry, do we have a second for Mr. Perry?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
Uh, Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We're now open for public comment on voting session agenda items, and remember, item number two and six are now not on the agenda. They have been removed, so we would only be dealing with items that are currently on the agenda. Open for members of the public.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raibro speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raibro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with regards to, uh, item number four on the agenda for the renewal of the lease agreement for the Domestic Relations Office in Hazelton. Uh, the last council meeting, they, actually, specifically the work session, Mr. Griffith brought up a good point about the, um, the, uh, Hazelton St. Joe's building, which happens to be located right behind the, uh, Domestic Relations Office in Hazelton. And I do believe that if the county should explore that option of, uh, maybe making a purchase down the road of that, uh, facility, of that building, uh, they could put the, the Domestic Relations Building and all the magistrates in the southern end, as well as even there's a, a morgue in the basement, uh, for the coroner. If, uh, the coroner needs to utilize uh, a space for, uh, him in the southern end of the county, I mean, you, it would be such a cost effective move to, uh, explore. So I would, uh, recommend and suggest that, uh, the county explore that option, uh, when it so chooses, or even, uh, when you're discussing the, uh, capital budget. Uh, with regards to the, uh, uh, the LERTA, I have, uh, ser- serious concerns, especially when it comes to, uh, the entity that is, uh, attached to the Hilltop Development. Uh, the, uh, NEPA 309 Builders LLC. Um, Mr. Chairman and members of council, if you decide to vote on this with that entity attached, you would be setting a precedence, uh, long into the future because that entity is not, has recently been established as of April of 2021. So that, you know, for anybody to not know who the principal owners or are, or have the track record of that builder or developer is highly circumspect, in my humble opinion. So I think you need to get your answers before you blanketly approve of, of that LERTA, uh, for that entity that's along with Hilltop. And, uh, with regards to the Acton County Manager, uh, uh, resolution, I hope that it is not as it was prior uh, with the previous, uh, process. I hope that it is, uh, more open and transparent and actually forthright instead of just, uh, a foregone conclusion as it was in the past. So those things I, I would, I would hope that, uh, the council would explore, uh, making this a better process as it was the last time around. Thank you.
Other members of public?
Uh, yes, uh, this is Lisa Rakowski.
Go ahead, Ms. Rakowski.
I'm here to let you know, uh, I had the issue with the warehouse going behind my house of the Birch Knoll Estates with the.
Right.
Hilltop Development.
Right.
And I have to say, attorney, attorney Faubello and, um, the developer, everybody came to my house. Mr. Fensley came to my house and his project manager, and he showed us all the blueprints and everything, explained to us how things are going to go. And they promised to take care of the damage that was done to my house. So I want to say they were very nice about it. They explained everything to me and my neighbors, and we were all very happy with the results. And they said if anything was to continue, we were to get in touch with them, but I wanted to let you know that they were all very nice to us and they're, things are being taken care of.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the public? Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the public?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Snee.
Uh, I'd just, uh, like to put some, uh, questions at ease that she had. Uh, those seven fire hydrants, uh, in that complex of Virchinal were all tested and are, are very good. And the street, the streets that were not plowed, were never turned over to the city. Mr. Valente still owns those streets. So that's why the city of Hazelton wasn't plowing those streets. But the fire hot, the seven fire hydrants are working fine.
Okay. Uh, other members of the public?
Uh, Mr. McGinley, uh, me and Mr. Perry, uh, stopped by her house, uh, twice. I was actually there four times to make sure that, uh, all her concerns were, uh, taken care of.
Very good.
And, and, uh, talking to, uh, Mr. Falbello, he assured me that if there was any questions, uh, that they want to be a good neighbor and they'll address whatever issues the neighbors have.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Anyone else in the public?
Mr. Mantle.
Mr. Mantle, go ahead.
How's everybody tonight? Well, I'd like to voice my opinion on the, on the selection of the Newt County manager. I, I, I believe that we, we've went, we went through two.
Well, uh, Mr. Mantle, excuse me, Mr. Mantle, the selection of the Newt County manager is not on the agenda for this evening?
Oh. Cause it was in the, it was in the paper that it was. That's why I.
Now, the managing managers, that selection is not part of the meeting this evening?
The acting manager is.
The acting.
Acting manager, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, acting manager. I, that's, that's what I meant. So, so, thank you, Walter. So, so the acting manager for the, uh, for the county, aren't we adult enough to look at the big picture and, and find someone that is more qualified for the job than the people that, that you're gonna appoint? I, I know, I, I guess it would be, uh, Ms. Kokomo would be the acting manager, uh, intra-manager since he's gone. But I, I have no, I have respect for Ms. Kokomo. But we've had two people that were managers that shouldn't have been in the job to begin with. So, so let's be smart this time and select someone that really knows how to manage money and not, uh, misappropriate funds and utilize money in the wrong way and, and make decisions that don't go by the county council. Everything should, if they have a county council, everything should go through the county council as far as the manager. I mean, you people appoint the count, the, the, the manager, so he should answer to you for everything that he does. I mean, even the daily, the daily task of, 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 uh, simple things. But there should be a limit put on his spending where he has to answer the county council, whoever he or she may be, so that the council could have a better handle on what's going on. And that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members of public? Okay, moving on to agenda items. Motion to approve the minutes from the June eighth meeting. Do we have a motion?
Present it, Snee.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No, Urban.
No.
Mr. Urban, Mr. Griffith, any extensions? Unheard, motion carries. Okay, moving down. Uh, first item under county manager motion to adopt the ordinance, amending the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. That is the drug and alcohol money that we had the public here hearing about.
Mr. McGinley, I have old business, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, under old business, I sent an email out on, uh, June the sixteenth regarding the, uh, Chronos time clock system, and I have not gotten a response. I would like a response to that as old business. Um, I just want to know who is, uh, my email says, please provide a list of any and all employees that are not required to use the Chronos time clocks. And what is the procedure for those employees to get approval and track their paid time off with the HR department? So Mr. Pedries on, on the, uh, on the call here, if you could answer that question for me. I did send that out to him as well as, uh, Brian Swets and Ms. Kokomo.
All, may I speak, Mr. McGinley?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, please.
Uh, you, you can't get paid unless you're in Chronos. So every employee utilizes Chronos.
That's punching in and punching out, correct?
Every employee utilizes Chronos. That's the only way to get paid.
Is that punching in and punching out is my question?
I'm not sure what that means.
Do they have to punch in or do they have to punch out?
Every single employee has to either input it on the, on the touchscreen or in the computer, is my understanding. I have to defer to HR, but every single person has to utilize, uh, Chronos so they can't get paid.
Okay, so, okay, I, I just wanted to know if they had to punch in and punch out because there are some.
When we, obviously, we stopped, we stopped the time clock uses during Corona, during COVID. Uh, we, we've now been putting them back. The, um, uh, the, the computers, uh, to punch in, punch out, that's approved by the managers. I defer to HR for the following thing, but every single person has to be in Chronos in order to get paid.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Again, down to number one, motion to adopt the ordinance, amending the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year budget. We have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Saban, who, second for Ms. Saban?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Howt? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howt?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Remember, number two has been removed from this evening's agenda. Down to number three, motion to adopt a resolution, authorizing county manager to execute a software acquisition and licensing contract with Microsoft Corporation for the Microsoft contract. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howt, do we have a second for Ms. Howt?
Second, Sheila.
Saban, on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes, yes.
Howt, Howt?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Down to number four, motion to adopt a resolution approving the agreement to renew a lease agreement with the Don Forte Enterprises for the desk domestic relations office located seven oh one North Church Street, Hazelton, PA. Do we have a motion?
Present it, Snee.
Okay, Mr. Snee and Ms. Howt, second?
Second.
Okay. On the question?
Yeah, Steve here, real quick. Just wanted to know why it took six months after, uh, the, basically why, why this contract is six months late coming to us?
I, I, this is Lisa Paradi, I'm the director of domestic relations. Yes, I, I'd like to address that issue. I started my position as director in March, at which time I discovered that the lease was expired. Uh, that's the best answer I can give you. I can't respond as to why it had not been renewed. Um, you, you would have to talk to the prior director.
Chris, Chris. Thank you, thank you.
I just.
I mean, I, I guess from the county's perspective, I mean, we have an office of law or, or many people that work in the county. I mean, can we get somebody to do sort of like contract administration? So we're not doing this after the fact, um, in, in many of the contracts that we, we have to approve. I mean, it looks like obviously something that we're doing as a formality at this point versus, uh, the signing off on, so.
Actually, actually, Mr. Councilman Urban, we are, uh, we have a, a program now for contract management. And part of that will be calendaring, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, certain terms of the, uh, contracts. Uh, when notice has to be given for termination, you know, date, uh, it expires, uh, renewal code. So we are in the process of, uh, of transferring all our contracts electronically and we'll be able to do that. So not only the office of law, but we'll bring in each department, uh, and contract administrator who will also, uh, have that information as well.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Howt?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number five, motion to adopt.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving payment in lieu of taxes, agreement with the Hazelton Creek Commerce Center Holdings. Do we have a motion?
Present it, Snee.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry, on the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howt?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number six was removed from the agenda this evening. Down to number seven, motion to adopt the ordinance, amending the Luzerne County zoning map to rezone three parcels of property holding six point five one acres in the township from highway business district, agricultural district and single family residence to highway business district and agricultural district zone. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Griffith.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Ms. Radel? On the question? Mr. Jones, did you hear, uh, Mr. Rabo in, in the public hearing?
Yes, I did. Would you like me to address that, Chairman?
Please.
Okay. Um, that was an excellent question. It was a question that we prepared for. Uh, let me say that, uh, this property is at Muhlenberg Corners. It is currently a private auto repair shop owned by the May family. Um, after the rezoning, um, there would be an expansion of it. Uh, they, they would end up with a few different parcels.
You're breaking up, Mr. Jones. Your voice is not coming through. You're breaking up.
Hear me now.
Yes, that's better.
Okay. One of the parcels that the May's own has their primary residence. That property would see the agriculture zone expanded so that they would have more room to build an addition on their house. Residences are allowed in the agriculture zone. The next parcel over that they own is where their auto repair shop is. That, that parcel would see an expansion of the highway business zone to encompass that entire dual parcel area. That would allow for the potential expansion of their auto repair shop or the development of a new appropriate business for that zone. Um, there, there is a neighbor off the south end of that property, and there's also a neighbor across the street. Those neighbors are in the agriculture zone and there are residences in that area. Uh, now let me say that all of the neighbors within two hundred feet of the subject site were notified several weeks ago that this rezoning was proposed. A sign announcing the rezoning proposal was posted physically on the property last week. The rezoning appeared in the listings in the newspaper twice over the past two weeks. Uh, and this is the fourth public meeting we've held. Uh, one meeting was held by the planning commission who advanced this item to you. And this is the third of three meetings that council has held to discuss this item. And we have not heard, um, any expression of concern from any of the neighbors in that region about the rezoning. Um, now, uh, Mr. Rabo did ask, you know, whether there are any setback or buffering requirements in this particular scenario. And I just, my staff and I just scrambled to look at the ordinance. Uh, there are requirements. So if there were an expansion of this business and there were any new buildings proposed to be built in the future that would neighbor a residential property, there would be a fifteen foot side yard setback. And, uh, and Alan or Jessica, if you're on the telephone, uh, let me know what the front yard setback is for the buildings. Um, but the, the closest neighbor would see at least a fifteen foot yard setback. And they on their own property would have to observe a twenty-five foot setback. So the closest a building could be would be within, would, would be no closer than forty feet of any neighboring property, any neighboring home. Uh, in terms of buffering requirements, if there was an expansion of the parking lot, that would trigger a buffering requirement. And the zoning department could require that the business install an opaque fence or an evergreen planting to screen any new parking area from any neighboring residents.
Okay.
Alan, did you get the front yard setback or Jessica?
Matt, that's thirty feet.
Thirty feet. Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
So I hope that answers your question. Uh, we've heard no concerns and there are substantial requirements to mitigate any kind of, uh, concerns in the future that might arise from, uh, neighboring uses of land. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Howt?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to number eight, this is the motion that was, uh, tabled last, last meeting. So do we have a motion to remove this from the table?
So will, Mr. Chair, Chris?
Mr. Perry, do we have a second for Mr. Perry? Mr. Schnee. Roll call.
Ms. Radel.
Yes.
Ms. Dedman.
Yes.
Mr. Schnee.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Vog.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
No.
Mr. Haas.
Yes.
Ms. Hough.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Okay, it's removed from the table. Do we now have a motion to adopt the resolution establishing a tax exemption? For a property tax for certain deteriorated industrial, commercial, or other business property. Defining eligible deteriorated areas, setting a maximum exemption amount, an exemption schedule, and providing a procedure for obtaining exemption. We have a motion. Mr. Schnee. Do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel. On the question.
On the question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Haas.
Yeah, I appreciate the majority tabling this motion last week to get more information and to help out. Bring some justice to Ms. Rakowski there and it looks like that's happened. And I appreciate Mr. Favello incorporating that, all the results of what the developers did for her. And for the other leaders down there in Hazelton and South County. However, the big issue aside from that is also the unbalanced LERTA that the developers have submitted to Luzern County Council. And that was not addressed. And when we look at page 82. It was tabled, or 83 rather. The letter says it was tabled because of concerns brought forth by Ms. Rakowski. But I was very clear, I was very offended that the developer submitted an imbalanced proposal. That Hazelton School District got a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes upfront for about $300,000. And then Hazelton City got alerted that was very disproportionate to what was offered to Luzern County, which was nothing originally. And now when we look at this resubmission for the third time, it's still unbalanced. This is a real affront. I don't know how anybody could really support this. We, when we look at these LERTAs and/or Koz's through the years. The developers always come forth and they were very adamant that all three taxing bodies had to be, had to be have to offer the same breaks in order to attract business. Well, what we see here is that the development's already begun. And that's why we've had some property damage near the site because the development has already started. So as far as I see, unless Mr. Favello can explain this to me and the rest of council. This is, this is not material. If Luzern County chooses not to support this, again, thinking on behalf of all county taxpayers in this case. The development will still go through. It's not going to impede this project. Again, if you look at that, Hazelton City. It was not included in this week's package. So council members could not compare the LERTA that we were given compared to Hazelton City. So you have to actually go back to the May 11th meeting. You have to look at that old agenda. You have to examine page 212 and 213 to see that Hazelton City Council got a 90% gave a 90% LERTA for the first five years. Well, Luzern Counties, Luzern County will receive that same amount for the first seven years. Hazelton City, for year number six, they'll have an 80%. They offered an 80% tax abatement. We in year six have a 90%. In year seven, Hazelton City gets 60%. We still have a 90% tax abatement. In year 10, the developer or whoever purchased the properties will be paying 100% taxes. For Luzern County, they're going to only be paying 40%. The whole thing's imbalanced. That was my big issue. It was not addressed. And somehow the justification that, oh, well, Luzern County Council approved the LERTA with the exact same copy and paste schedule for North Point. Is like comparing apples to oranges. That one before council, council majority gave a Koz. They gave, they gave no LERTA whatsoever. It was 100% tax abatement for 10 years. So that was a benefit to county taxpayers. This one is an affront to county taxpayers. So I don't, I don't understand why that wasn't offered. And maybe perhaps Mr. Favello can explain that or whoever else is on the call about this. Because I tell you what. This is grossly unfair. I have more, but I'd like to see that addressed first if I could, Mr. Chair.
One second, Mr. Haas, and you certainly will have it addressed. Any other questions? Before we go to Ms. Stone.
Mr. Griffin.
Go ahead.
I echo Mr. Haas's concerns. That's exactly what my issue was at the last meeting as well. Is that, you know, we're not, we're not getting the same LERTA deal as Hazelton City is my first concern. And I've expressed that twice. I think I have even expressed it at our work session as well. But the other question is the one that obviously Mr. Raabo raised on his personal comment is the ability for them to create this corporation in April of this year. And I don't know who the people are for the corporation. I think they might have told me, but maybe they could enlighten me again as to who the people are of the NEPA 309 LLC corporation, who the principal owners are of that corporation was just created in April. But I really don't believe that this LERTA. And I mean, you know, quite honestly, I'm kind of offended at the fact that, you know, I went up to see Ms. Lisa Rakowski as well. And what they're doing there, I mean, they don't, they didn't have any erosion barriers or anything when I was up there looking around. At least I didn't see them. So there's, there was some concerns that I saw when I was at Ms. Rakowski's property as well. And now because we've, County Council has taken the issue of not approving the LERTA. They go in and take care of all the issues. They should have taken care of the issues before they even happened. I mean, those people are property owners in the county. They have a right to peaceful property, have a right to, you know, not have their property damaged. And it was going on and then because Ms. Rakowski came to council and raised the issue, they went over there and said, well, we'll take care of it. Well, I think they should have took care of it on the front end. So I have some concerns about this particular LERTA. But, and I won't, I won't be supporting it because I just don't think it's proportionate. Harry's point is very well taken. And I don't, and I don't believe that this creation of an LLC in April, which is only like two months ago. Is, well, I don't even know if it's appropriate. I just don't, I don't like the way it looks and I don't like the way it appears to people. I also have a question for the Office of Law regarding the ability for Mr. Perry to vote on this with his brother being on the Hazelton City Council. I don't believe it's a conflict. But I certainly would like Office of Law to weigh in just to be sure that we don't have any issues with that as well. And that's all I have on my question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. McGinley.
Yes, go ahead.
I certainly respect my colleagues and how they feel about any vote that they take and how they feel about the LERTA in front of us. My take is totally opposite of their view and that's fine. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, Bob and I did go see the property. We weren't able to get in because she wasn't home, but I was able to see a little bit in the background. Her back property and into the development itself. We did take a walk and look at it. I don't think anybody realizes how big 95 acres is. It was to me astounding. I thought I was at an airport type of truth. It is a huge area. And I'd like to commend Attorney Favello. You know, Mr. Start, Stagel, Sarjo, I'm sorry if I pronounced it wrong, Mr. Alderman for following up. And I'm not going to go through all the concerns again, but just being a good neighbor and doing what they were supposed to do. Whether or not they should have did it first or not, doesn't matter. They're doing it. And that's the most important thing. I also want to commend them for coming back with a a new LERTA from $100,000 after 10 years to 450. I think it's substantial. If it doesn't meet Mr. Haas and Mr. Griffiths. What they think it should be, that's, they're certainly right to vote against it. But I certainly, having been a member of that community for 60-some years of my life. I know what it's like. I go back there. My brother and sister live in Hazelton. So I go through that community and I know what this means to their community. I'm not sure if a lot of people take rides up there. But this is a substantial increase to their economic development. And that this building will be up. I'm just taking a guess, maybe be 40 years out. And that's going to be a big, big clog to their, to their community. I'm not going to go into the benefits because we all know what they are. We've talked about LERTAs many, many times before. We got to take advantage of my humble opinion of the corridor that we live in. The 81 corridor that we have in front of us. And we got to take advantage anywhere we can. I will commend Mr. Haas and Mr. Griffith. And behind the scenes, Mr. McGinley of having the resolution changed from what it was to what it is now. You did our negotiations for it. And from that point on, I am going to support it because Southern Luzern County needs it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, fine.
I don't begrudge anybody their vote and I understand, obviously, you know, Chris is from Hazelton, Bob's from Hazelton. I get it. I understand our communities need economic development. But we need to do it fairly and consistently. This is just not consistent. My concern is not the amount. My concern is that Hazelton City has a totally different exemption schedule than Luzern County does. I don't know how we can support this. And when we look at this, again, the whole purpose for LERTA and these tax abatements is to spur development. Development's been going on for many months at this point. If we say no to this, we are not going to stop the project. It will not affect the project. That's what we got to understand here. And I consistently voted against projects in other parts of the county too, and Hanover and Piston too, because it's just not fair. The local taxing body, municipality, whether it be the township or the borough of the city, I totally understand. It's in their best interest, they think, to give in many cases, 100% tax abatement. The school district, they're looking long-term. We on County Council need to take into account all of the taxpayers of Luzern County. I'm not anti-development. I think it's a wonderful thing. But we've got to understand, when you develop a property, you take a certain amount of risk. And at this point, they've already, because the taxing bodies of the district and the city have already removed a substantial amount of risk. All is I'm saying, we need to be fair to all the taxpayers of Luzern County, just like we've been in other areas. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Attorney Favello, are you on?
I am.
Would you like to respond to some of the questions and comments that you've heard?
Only yes to the comment of fairness. Well, first of all, actually, two points. To answer the question about the LLC, Hillwood Properties is the sole member of the LLC that's developing the site. Hillwood Properties is a very experienced commercial and industrial developer. So this is not a shell company. It is a very established company. With all due respect to Mr. Haas. Item five on tonight's agenda. Approved a pilot of $100,000 for Hazelton Creek, which is right down the road from us. Hazelton Creek had an exemption schedule for 10 years of zero taxes. Now by comparison. Hazelton Creek Properties is almost three times as large as our site. And they were approved for development of, I believe, 4 million square feet. Which is substantial improvement. We are approved for almost 2 million. The amount of the payment that is going to come, as recited in our resolution relates only to phase one of the project. Phase two, once that's developed, will add additional tax payments to the county. That is likely to bring the total for the entire parcel on the improvements to 650 or 700,000 dollars. So by comparison, we think we are being fair, particularly to an industrial development that was approved. I believe item five was approved unanimously. We're paying in excess of four times what was just approved earlier this evening. For a project that is half the size. So I hope I addressed council's question in that regard. And I appreciate your time and consideration.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, my question still remains unanswered after, after two work sessions, a voting session even tonight. It is not about any other property. It's not about North Point. It's not about Hazelton Creek. It's about this issue that is disproportionate between the city and the county. That's the issue. It keeps on being avoided. Why are we going around in circles here? Look at the fee schedule, 212, 213, May 11th meeting. If you, if you had children and you gave one a tremendously different package than the other, there'd be a lot of angst at the dinner table. That's what this is. There's angst at the dinner table tonight.
I think we heard your message, Mr. Haas.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mike. Mike. Mr. Chairman, this is Mike Alderman with Hillwood. If I could address a few things, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. We very much, we just, we're not asking for anything other than being fair and consistent. And as Attorney Favello mentioned, we actually, by doing the math. We're proposing to build a project that's half as large. But will pay four times more revenue to the county. If I could go back and give you a little bit of background, we started working on the project in 2017. At the time, there were over 20 properties in Luzern, Schuylkill, and Lackawanna County that had tax abatements. There are now over 15 and those are the properties that we compete against day in and day out. So as we work to try to attract a prospective company. They are always professionally represented by consultants who understand the taxing environment. And they have the ability to look at the tax abatements offered across that northeastern Pennsylvania area and look at the different incentives and do the math. So there's very much a level setting that happens. So in the event, we were competing to attract a company with the Hazel Creek property across the street from us. Over a 10-year period, if we had similar buildings, and this is hypothetical, but a company comparing the two would rightfully look at the county assessment of what we've proposed tonight versus what was proposed across the street and say that our property, Hillwood's property, has a $350,000 disadvantage. I don't think that that's fair, but we're not arguing about that. But we, we were told by county staff to go get, of course, the city has to be the granting LERTA entity. That's just how the state law works. So we went to the, to the city first. The city adopted the resolution. They chose to give us the abatement schedule that we currently have. Which is less than 100% for 10 years. Then we went to the school district and then January, the school district was able to hear our and entertain our resolution. And they, they didn't care what the city did. They acted on their own accord and gave us a declining schedule. Similar to what we have in the resolution before tonight. At the time, the most recent county resolution that we saw was a 100% 10-year abatement. We submitted that thinking that that's what the county would want to do because that's what the county recently approved for other similar competing sites. And we submitted that on May 25th. And it's not that we were asking for anything that we thought at the time was extraordinary. We were just asking for what, based upon public information, the county had already granted to other similar projects. And we heard you about it clear on May 25th. That the 100% abatement schedule for 10 years wasn't what the county was interested in doing. So we submitted a schedule on June 8th that matched another declining schedule. That the county approved for another different site, again, a competing site. Thinking that the county would want to apply their LERTA policy consistently. And again, we're not, we weren't asking for anything other than what we thought was the normal precedent at the time. The, then in the background of all this, we've suffered a little bit too, in that the city granted a resolution to another site. Giving them a 100% abatement. We don't plan to go back to the city and ask for anything in adjustment for that. But to the extent that there have been comments that these schedules should be the same across all taxing authorities. I want you to know that we care about the communities we work in and we're not here to wring the last dollar out of everybody. We're just asking to be treated fairly against the 15 to 20 sites in northeastern PA that do have these incentives. And many of them have, as I mentioned, a more robust incentive program than we do. program than we do. Regarding the entity, we've developed over 30 years. It's a routine practice when you use institutional financing from large banks. They want you to use the limited liability corporation law. It's a way of protecting a bank. That is a standard way of operating, and as a standard way of financing projects that cost millions and millions of dollars. So that's not a matter of trying to hide anything. It's just a function of how institutional lending works from big banks like JP Morgan, Bank of America, PNC, and banks like that. And if I could just add one other piece, we started construction in January. During the pandemic, many buildings in Pennsylvania, New Jersey got leased, and we were approached by a company that doesn't operate in northeastern PA, but they have facilities in other parts of the state, not touching Luzern County. And they expressed interest in a distribution facility. This is an international manufacturer. They would be using this facility for distribution and for return logistics, serving the northeastern United States. We acted on our own accord to move to start doing the site work as a way of trying to attract that company to Hazleton. The company told us that it was paramount that the building be done by next June, and there was no way to do that if we didn't start working. We did that based upon the faith that Luzern County, the city of Hazleton, and the school district have acted consistently in giving incentives in the past. That was a leap of faith that we took by investing our dollars and putting them at risk. If we do not get alerted, that company will not locate at our facility. They will go to one of the other 15 sites in northeastern PA that has LERTA, and will be damaged for taking a risk in trying to create jobs. I don't think anybody wants that particular outcome. I appreciate you letting me go through this. Again, our whole approach to working with you has been to just simply ask for what's been given to other developers, not more. If there's a way of engaging in a positive discussion to make things the way you'd like them, we certainly be happy to do that. Hopefully, we've demonstrated over the last two weeks, we care about the communities we work in, and we welcome communication with neighbors, and we do what we can to do the right thing. And we really appreciate your help in letting us be in business in Hazleton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Hawes.
I appreciate the gentleman, but with all due respect, he did not hear me loud and clear. My concern continues to be unaddressed. There is an unbalanced LERTA between the city and the county. I'd like to make an amendment that instead of the exemption schedule that was just copied and pasted from North Point, that be copied and pasted from page 213, 212 and 213, from the May 11 agenda, where it will mirror exactly what Hazleton City has, being that years one to five, there will be a 90% tax abatement. In year six, it'll be 80%. Year seven, 60%. Year eight, 40%. Year nine, 20%. And in year 10, there will be no tax abatement whatsoever. What's fair is fair. This is the controlling issue here, and it's not being addressed by the other parties. And I think if the other members of council really want to see this passed, which I think it's a valuable project, I think they would support this amendment. So that's my amendment.
For Hawes.
I'll second it, Linda.
Mr. Hawes, you made that motion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Howe, you're seconding that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Everybody understand? Mr. Hawes is making a motion to change the abatement schedule. Years one through five, it'd be at 90%. Year six, 80%. Year seven, 60%. Year eight, 40%. Year nine, 20%. And no abatement in year 10. That's the motion.
Correct.
Roll call on the amendment, please.
Ms. Sedman?
May I ask a question first of the chairman procedurally? If the amendment fails, okay, do we go back to the original abatement schedule?
Yes, we do. Original abatement schedule that's in the information.
Okay. Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Wait. Hold on a minute. This is for the amendment.
This is for the amendment that would change the abatement schedule.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? I'm sorry. I know you started to vote, but may I make a comment?
No, you may not now.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No problem. Mrs. Snee, you have a question that you need answered, too?
I just think this is a severe blow to the city of Hazleton if we go through with this. I'm voting no.
Okay. No?
Okay, she voted no. Next, Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Mr. Hawes?
Forgive me, yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Radell? Mr. McGinley?
No.
4-0, seven.
The amendment passes, 7-4?
Correct.
Okay, we're going back to the motion. Mr. Snee made the motion, and Ms. Radell made the second. Are you okay with adding that amendment, Mr. Snee and Ms. Radell? Mr. Snee and Ms. Radell?
I am, yes.
Mr. Snee?
No.
No?
I'll make the motion. Linda, I'll make the motion, then.
Ms. Howe makes the motion, then. And we have a second. Ms. Howe, Ms. Radell, you're going to second that?
Yeah, second.
Very good. Now, roll call on that. Remember, this is the original motion with the amendment that passed.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Mr. Hawes?
Forgive me again, yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman? Mr. McGinley?
I'm not voting yes, but I'm not happy with the fact that we're making last-minute amendment here. But I will support the motion with the amendment.
Seven, yes. Four, no.
Okay. That passes. Moving down to number nine, motion regarding the CCAP summer conference. Mr. Hawes, this is something that you brought to us last meeting?
Yes, sir. It's an annual conference. It's three days. It's a little short because of the pandemic this year, but it's a $400 registration fee. I'm just asking that council pre-approved the $400 expenditure. And mileage, I cover everything else when I go down there.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Sedman.
I brought this up last week, or last meeting. Certainly, Harry's been going. Is there any objection of having another person go? I would be interested in going, I believe. I just, Harry, I don't want you to take offense to this, but Harry has some very strong opinions, and I've never been to this, as we've just seen. I've never been to this conference, but I'm sure in the breakout sessions, people hear from members of different commissions, councils, whatever. And I think that issue, or our statements as a county, need to be balanced.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we need, first of all, I want to let everybody know, I checked the budget for county council. We have $500 in the budget for conferences and meetings. So you can see that the conference itself is $400, and mileage would be an additional amount that would be added. So we could possibly transfer some money from some other parts of our budget. That would be something the council would have to agree to. Okay?
You know, if it's an issue, Mr. Chair, I don't have a problem with just Ms. Sedman going, either. That's totally fine with me.
Well, I just want to let everybody know what the budget situation is, so we don't get ourselves into a situation later on, say, you know, where's that 300 bucks coming from? I'm not, I have no issue with anyone's, as far as do they want to go or don't want to go. I personally am not able to go, so you stated your interest, and so is Ms. Sedman. So we have a motion.
I'll make the motion for Mr. Hawes to go.
Griffith, so do we have a second for Mr. Griffith in regards to Mr. Hawes?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. Okay. Question?
On the question, Mr. McGinley, and I understand Ms. Sedman's point, but I'm just concerned that, you know, we obviously, our county council's not elected by party or by political ideologies. Our council is elected by whatever the people decide. So if we're going to set that precedent that if a person of the Republican Party, if that's what we're alluding to, here goes, and somebody from the Democratic Party has to go, then what do we do at the point where we don't have that option? Suppose we have all Republicans one year, how are we going to send two people? And so I have a problem with the issue. I mean, I don't have a problem with somebody going just because they think they need to go and get the knowledge. I don't have a problem with that at all. But the ability for us to say that we're going to go just because we want to get a different point of view down at CCAP, I think, is another problem, because clearly, I have different points of view. We all know that. So why, can I go, too? So, I mean, it's just, you see the slippery slope we become standing on. That's my concern. I have no problem if Jeevo wants to go. I have no problem if Harry wants to go, but I don't think we need to send two people just because.
He can allow for two people to go, so.
Wasn't the motion just to send Mr. Hawes?
That's what is the motion by Mr. Griffith.
Right, okay.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Do we have any other motions? Well, I'll make a motion and send Ms. Sedman. Do I have a second?
Second, Snee.
Okay.
May I make a comment on that? Mr. Griffith, I wasn't talking about Republican or Democrat. I was talking about, I mean, Harry could have, sometimes Harry's views are more Democratic than mine, but more liberal. But that's not the issue. The issue is just a drastic point of view than the majority of council, be that Democratic or Republican.
Okay.
To be clear, any of us could go. It's a matter of who funds it. So certainly, any member of council would be able to go to attend. And I think there was a time, was there not one year, Mr. Hawes, where you paid your own way?
Yeah, the first year.
Right.
I only went for a couple of days that time. And, you know, there's, again, are you done, Linda? I mean?
No, I'm done.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Every county's different. Some counties participate very enthusiastically at CCAP, at all the conferences. There are quarterly conferences, too, that are just like one afternoon that you go down, or a couple. And I do attend those as well, but there's not a registration fee for those, so I never bring that before council. I just go and attend, and that's open to anybody. And you can go on your own. I'm sure other counties, they have, I'm sure it's covered in other counties. Some counties choose not to participate whatsoever. Philadelphia, I don't think I've ever seen anybody from Philadelphia County ever attend there. But in years past, it's just a way to really understand what it means to serve the people of your county. I know just a couple of years back, they had, the state recently granted a change in the pilot, in the payment in lieu of taxes for state game lands and forest lands. And I know it was budget season, and it was very, it was just before that. And because I knew that because of the CCAP, I was able to save, I think it was like $40,000, because we were able to change up the budget schemata in our budget, because we've got quite a bit of acreage there. So there is value, more than, paid the registration fee 10,000 times over. And that's the neat thing you learn when you attend these conferences, you know, blighted properties. You know, I've been a real champion of that, and that's generally an issue, too, down there. So I know the last thing I want to say, Mr. Chair, and I'll shut my yapper here, but I know some counties, they send the entire three-member board of commissioners, and then they give a fourth registration fee. So, you know, again, a lot of counties choose to do that as well. So it might be something we can consider in the future when it comes time to budget.
Okay, we have a motion to send Ms. Sedman by myself, second by Mr. Snee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Since Harry was just speaking, and he said, you know, if you send three members, he'd get a fourth free, let's make a motion to send Walter as well, and then possibly a fourth person.
Well, I think the most important thing is finding out if Mr. Griffith's available.
Oh, I'm available. Like, listen, I'm semi-retired. I'll just tell Motor World I need that time off.
Well, okay. I mean, I don't want to commit it to something that...
No, that's fine. In fact, because I love to drive so much, everybody could carpool with me.
Well.
But save mileage.
That's up to the three people, if that's what it's going to be. So, Mr. Urban, you made that motion. Do we have a second?
Standing still, sir.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? On the question?
On the question, Mr. Chair, just because of the pandemic issues, can somebody look through that packet and just make sure that that is being offered this year, too? It might be a little different this year.
Yeah, I did see something in the CCAP brochure.
Yeah, I looked at this packet. I wasn't looking at that specifically, but I did look at the packet. It seems to be the consensus that that is available.
Okay, good, just to make sure.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell? Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Number 10, motion regarding county council emails. I think Mr. Griffith, you brought this up at our previous meeting.
Ms. McGinley, before we go to that item, are we going to send a fourth member? Do you want to address that now?
Uh, no, let's see who has an interest, and if we have someone with an interest, then we can certainly ratify that at the next meeting. And since we're going to have some other meetings coming up, we'll have some time, I believe.
Okay.
Need any deadlines?
Not a problem, thank you.
Okay.
The deadline for early registration is the end of June, just so you're aware, so...
Yeah, I read that, Mr. Haas, thank you.
Oh, that's right, it comes free anyway, all right, all right, forgive me. So, I mean, so everybody, you want to make your reservations in the next week, just to let you know.
So do we have to register the three people to get the fourth by June 30th?
We will check that out tomorrow. Okay? Thank you.
And wait, one more second. Harry, you make the reservation, we personally make the reservations at the Motor Lodge.
Well, it's a $400, it's a $400 registration fee, and I've always put that on my credit card, and then the county reimburses me after that, the accommodations are something separate.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I don't think there's a deadline for that, but I'm sure it will fill up.
Yeah.
There is a deadline, but Mr. Haas, please, we may have to do a congregate registration in order to get that fourth one, so we'll check that out tomorrow, we'll email out to the three people, all right?
Very good.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
County council emails.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we temporarily suspend all county emails, all county council emails from being posted to the website, and any emails that are currently posted be removed from the website until we get a opinion or a policy and procedure in place regarding how to properly post those emails to the website.
Made that motion, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Okay, on the question?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Sademan.
Mr. Griffith, would you explain to me again why you feel this way, because I know that you enjoy transparency, so I don't understand exactly why we are eliminating our emails on the website.
Well, and I appreciate that, Ms. Sademan. The issue that I'm having is, if you look through some of the emails, not only recently since, obviously, myself and other members of council have been on council, but emails from the past, there are some emails out there that are actually sent, not council to council, but council to other people, and my concern is that, first of all, it's a lot of work for the Office of Law to open up all these emails and redact or verify that they're not going to be a problem, first of all, but more importantly, I think we have a right-to-know policy and procedure in the county, as well as the state. If anybody wants any emails, they could certainly request those emails. We saw one today from Mr. Donahue requesting emails from all county council members, as well as the Board of Elections. So there is a mechanism in place for that to happen. I know at the time when that was all put in place back in 2012 or 13, or whenever that all took place, there really wasn't any kind of motion made to say, to do it, from what I saw through all the emails that I talked about at the last work session. It's not about transparency, it's about making sure that we're fair to people who are corresponding to us as council members, that possibly, you know, they don't want that information shared, and it ends up being shared through no fault of ours, obviously, because, you know, it was just posted. So I think if it was just council to council emails, you know, I probably wouldn't be so concerned about it, but it's more than that. It's council to council, it's council to manager, it's council to budget and finance, it's council to a lot of different people along the way, that probably should not be just arbitrarily put up there by one person in the Office of Law, who feels that that would not be a problem to put that up. So my concern is if we don't have a policy and procedure that outlines exactly what gets posted and how it gets posted, then I don't think we should be just doing it just because we want transparency. I think we need to make sure that we're doing it properly, and we don't have any opportunities for someone to come back and say, hey, I didn't want my email posted online, you know, it's out there on the website. So that's my concern. It's not about transparency, I don't mind, I don't mind if they post all of my emails, it doesn't bother me a bit, but I'm concerned about the people that may send me an email that might get up there on the website, or any member of council that may get an email from somebody that, you know, we don't want posted, you know, it's as simple as that.
I just don't think that anybody that sends an email has, they shouldn't have an expectation of privacy. And emails are out there, and, you know, Mr. Donahue copies many, many, many people.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, some of us don't use the email that much, unless we're responding to a constituent or to another council member. I just think that, why don't we keep it the way it is right now until we get a firm policy?
Well, and again, my concern is that, you know, if something's posted that's not supposed to be posted, if we're interested in transparency, we should have did the interviews of the acting county managers in public. If we're interested in transparency, let's be transparent.
That's a personnel matter, I don't think it could be...
Not a personnel matter, I mean, we could debate that, and that's not the issue, I just, I just want to, I just want to be clear that it's not about transparency for me. It's about making sure people who send, it forces members of council to use a private email address. That's what it does, basically, because we will all correspond privately through our own personal emails, because we won't use county, because it gets posted. And you can't, everybody on this council does it, because I get them. So we all use our personal email for county business. It's not supposed to be done, but it is, because we don't want them posted, and that's exactly why it's done that way. And that's what I want to eliminate, is if we have a policy and everybody's aware of what it is, then we wouldn't have a problem corresponding with our county email, because we knows exactly what would be posted and what wouldn't be posted. So that's my concern, I mean, I just, I appreciate your input, Ms. Sademan, but I just think that unless we have a policy and procedure, we may be letting ourselves open for a huge problem somewhere along the line, if somebody gets an email that's posted online and they didn't want it there.
Well, I just don't, I strongly believe that if a person sends an email, they don't, they have to understand it's not confidential, that is, they don't have an expectation of privacy, and in fact, if we want to put something like that on our website to let people know that emails that they send regarding county council issues, or any issue to council member, may be posted. And I think that covers it until we have a firm policy in place.
And I agree with you, and if that policy was posted on the website, I would absolutely agree with you, I think that would be a proper way to handle it, is that we put something out there that says your email may be public, so if you want to send it to council, feel free, because people are sending stuff to LCCM, not realizing that that email may be posted someday.
Well, that's not hard to do.
Well, I agree with you, I think if we put that expectation of privacy out there and everybody's aware of it, I would have no problem at all with that. This is Steve. Yeah, I mean, the only, the only two areas of concern that I would, I was going to say, the only two area concerns of that I would have would be, number one is if you were discussing something that has to do with like HIPAA, and then potential litigation, you know, that's slipping through the cracks, those are the only thing, two areas that I could see that would be a concern, because we do use our official emails at times for certain, you know, constituent services, or, you know, potentially talk about a case or something like that. So those, obviously, we don't want to slip through the cracks, and to put a disclaimer out on the website, we haven't agreed upon a policy yet to put that disclaimer out there, so we haven't taken a vote to just simply put a paragraph out there to expect that your emails aren't private. So until we put that in place, I think, you know, currently, it would be just be who was, service better to just currently suspend the process until we get a grip on it and redefine it and do it the right way.
Someone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Schnee.
I agree 100% with Mrs. Sademan.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I would like to make a amendment that we suspend further loser in county emails at this point until we get a firm policy, which would be approved through council, and then we would pick up again with the emails. I believe that any emails are out there now, have been out there for a little bit, and I don't believe there's been any issues, and I firmly believe that anyone can read my emails, I have no issue with that at all, if they're out there, and anybody makes that request, I'd be happy to send my emails to them. So that's my amendment that we suspend until we have a policy, but we leave everything else in place until we confirm that policy. Do we have a second for that?
Second, Schnee.
Okay. On the amendment? Which would be suspend going further until we have a policy in place. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Volk?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, so now, going back to the original motion, we will suspend emails, we'll leave the emails that are up currently, and we will develop a policy that will be approved by county council. Mr. Griffith, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm fine with that, Mr. McGinley.
Mr. Urban, are you okay as a second?
Yes, that's fine.
Roll call on that, please.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, yeah.
Ms. Radel?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Volk?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk, or, excuse me, Mr. McGinley, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Unanimous.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley, shield again.
Yes, go ahead.
I think since we are doing the amendment on that, suspending until we have a policy, can you, or can people that want to be on that committee that proposes a policy be formed?
Yes, if people are interested, submit their names, and we'll announce that at our next meeting.
Would that be under the Code Review Committee?
I can't hear you.
Would that be Code Review Committee, possibly?
Well, I think this is more specific, the Code Review Committee still has some work to do, and I think this can be handled in a more timely manner, if we just have an ad hoc committee that deals with this one issue. Okay?
Maybe the Legislative Committee.
Well, I think ad hoc, to deal with this one issue, we get the policy together and have it back to council quickly for approval.
Good.
All right. Number 11, motion to adopt a resolution designating an acting county manager.
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Schnee, what's your motion?
Present it.
Okay, but you have to give me a name.
Mr. McGinley.
Mr. Milva Crocamo.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On to question, Mr. Griffith.
Excuse me, do you have to open nominations vote, just like we do the ABC?
No, we have a resolution with the name of Mr. Milva Crocamo. Mr. Griffith, you have a question?
Yes, I saw that there was an email that he sent out by Mr. Urban regarding the ability for us to pick the acting county manager, and what the charter clearly states, I think, I would request that we go into an executive session to discuss that, since how we did not get an answer regarding the ability for the charter to not address resignation of the county manager, as well as death of the county manager, and what's the procedure for picking? We don't have to pick someone from the executive branch. I know you got an opinion back when Dave Pedry was in charge, but I got it from Mr. Dean, who was a contractor for the county. So I have, I have some concerns about the ability for the charter, it clearly does not address resignation, and it does not address death, it only addresses suspension. So Mr. Urban asked that question, and we did not get an answer from anybody from the Office of Law or anybody else, so I don't know if you want to go into executive session to address that, or how do you want to handle that?
Well, I second that motion, that's reasonable.
I don't think that's a subject for executive session, it's not personnel, it's due to procedure.
I agree, it's not.
It's procedural.
It's not, it would not be an issue for executive sessions.
Okay.
Mr. Griffith, did you hear Mr. Druhlke?
Yes, I did, yeah, okay. So on the question, my concern is that we had applicants that we interviewed, and I think we should cast a net outside of the county for acting county manager. I don't believe that the charter restricts us in Section 406, that deals with the acting county manager, it does not restrict us when a manager resigns or dies in office, it does not restrict us for just executive branch. The charter is pretty clear, it says that if the manager resigns, or not the manager resigns, if the manager is suspended, you go from within the executive branch. It doesn't say if he resigns. Suspended is different, because when you talk about hiring the manager in Section 4 of the Charter, Section 4 of the Charter specifically will not allow county council to fire the manager on the spot. We have to give the manager 15 days from the time we tell him he no longer is employed by the county, to provide an argument with the county council, or not, and that is put in there by design, because that gives the manager a chance to determine whether he should be terminated or not. During that time, that's when the suspension is in place, and that's when we pick from the executive branch and his designee steps up. But after that point, we pick from a search committee, or we pick from county council, can cast a net anywhere they want for a county manager, acting county manager, according to the interpretation of the charter. So that's, does not say anything about resignation, it does not say anything about death. If the manager were to die in office tomorrow, we would not appoint an acting county manager. We would go out and get a man, we would appoint an acting county manager, but it wouldn't be from the executive branch.
How, Mr. Griffith, that's your interpretation? There's other people have other different interpretations?
Sure.
And obviously, there's a disagreement. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in as well. Since I sent the email out, I mean, just for the public to be aware that, you know, the personnel code is actually silent on the resignation or death of a county manager, the administrative code is silent on both topics as well. And so basically, the charter is the only document that we can follow to, you know, technically appoint a quote-unquote acting county manager. 406 is pretty much silent, you know, this isn't like the inability to serve, you know, in quotations, I mean, his inability was purposely brought on by a resignation. You know, death is a different issue alone, so, you know, I basically stated the ability of the resigned is there, you know, he made himself permanently unavailable, so it's a controlled event, and death is an unexpected event, but both are typically like final in nature, so, and I said, you know, once a county manager is no longer employed with the county by his or her own decision, the acting manager designation created by the one that's exiting should go away as well. I mean, their powers and duties, or their powers and temporary directives stop on the way out the door on their last service. And then 406, you know, it just basically doesn't state that we really have to pick somebody from the executive branch, you know, because it's like a membership, you know, item. And are we breaking any equal opportunity laws? Are we breaking any, you know, sort of equal protection clauses by saying that we can only discriminate and pick from within one branch of government, and not the judiciary even, that works in the county? Section 209(c) of the Charter also grants county council, and I'm going to quote, "all necessary inherent implied and incidental powers to perform and execute the duties and functions specified in this section elsewhere in this Charter or applicable law." The proceeding, you know, this is proceeding worth further, and allows us to execute the duties and functions in this section elsewhere in the Charter or in applicable law. I think, you know, liberally construed county council by majority vote could travel out... I think, you know, liberally construed county council by majority vote could travel outside of our lane in this case. You know, and it is pretty much a legislative matter, when we go and hire someone. And so I think, you know, it deals with the health and safety and welfare of the residents in picking a manager, and I think, you know, that's covered in 209(c), which gives us that power. And quite honestly, like I said, you know, and I have to concur with Mr. Griffith, it doesn't deal with the suspension, temporary absence, incapacity issue, or the inability to serve because of the manager being sick or being out because we suspended him. This is on his own accord, he's exiting, and I think we should cast a wider net, because quite honestly, I wasn't satisfied with the individuals that interviewed, some of them were terrible. And it's just unfortunate, that I think we want the best and the brightest to lead, you know, Luzerne County, even in a temporary capacity, status quo is unacceptable, in my opinion.
Okay, anyone else?
And, Mr. McGinley, under Section 405, it says removal, says the county manager shall serve at the pleasure of county council. County council may suspend, and the word suspend is put in there because they have an acting manager in 406, that if the manager is suspended, his designate takes over. It doesn't deal with the ability for the manager to resign. In fact, that section also gives the council the ability to spend 15 days finding an acting county manager, because it says within 15 days, the manager can come to the council. They have 15 days to accept the resolution. So there's plenty of time to get an acting county manager if we do an outside search as well as inside search, in that regard, so.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Motion and a second for?
Point, Ms. Crocamo is the acting county manager.
What about on the question?
We just, we're on the question, I'm sorry. We're on the question. Go ahead.
Okay. You know, so we interviewed the applicants the other day, and I appreciate the time that all of them took to apply, but I do think that when we select a manager, an acting manager, I think we need to be aware of what happens if we are drawing from the executive branch. And this is not anything about Ms. Crocamo as a person, but in my opinion, the three most important positions in the executive branch are the manager, budget and finance director, and the solicitor. The other divisions are very important, but much of their work is driven by those three positions. So we have a hole, or we will have a hole in the county manager spot. I don't think it's a big help to create another hole in one of those critical positions to fill the county manager slot temporarily. So what will happen if you appoint the current county solicitor to the acting manager position is that then you have no county solicitor, and now you have another hole, and a pretty important one that you have to plug. And I'm sure that there are attorneys in this county who would be happy to step up and fill that position. They're going to have to be appointed by the acting manager. But again, now you have two temporary people filling two of the three most critical positions in county government. I am not going to support this resolution, and again, it is not, not because it's Ms. Crocamo, it's because of the position that will be vacated if this resolution passes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
On the motion, I thought we were going to do it by the way we do ABCs, because quite honestly, we don't have an option to pick any of the other candidates. I mean, if we get six votes from Ms. Crocamo right now, if we get six votes right now, we don't get to pick any of the other candidates, correct?
That's correct.
Well, that's not fair to the other candidates to find out.
That would be done, too.
Pardon me?
If we did, for the ABC members who got six votes, that would be done, too.
Yeah, but we went around the table for nominations, to vote for the six votes.
This is the resolution, Mr. Griffith, it's been out there. It was noted that we had to put a name in. That was indicated.
I asked that question when we did the interviews, about how it would be done, because this is the practice of appointing someone like the clerk of counsel, or like that. We don't do open nominations for a position that we're hiring.
Are we going to, are we going to discuss compensation for this person first?
Not with this resolution.
That was supposed to be, that was supposed to be done as well.
I did ask that. I asked that as well.
Right.
Somebody wants to make an amendment, they may, but right now, the resolution does not have that in it.
I want to ask one quick question, too, is if the person that gets nominated does get the nomination, or at least wins the vote here, will Ms. Crocamo resign her solicitorship position, and then we will fill it with the permanent at that point in time? And then she would have to, if she should not get any type of county management position going forward, will she have to go back into the pool of people to try to gain that position back if she wants that job back? I don't think you're allowed, you should be able to hold any two positions, so I think one position should be resigned, if that's the case.
Well, it's not the procedure we did in the past.
Well, you can't hold two positions, you can't be both.
You're correct, and we had an interim county solicitor.
Okay, so she can make an emotion to amend the appointment to the acting county manager that the salary be according to Section 403 of our Charter, that says they're entitled to receive employee benefits and reimbursement of expenses incurred in the performance of his duties, and will not be paid more than the minimum amount. So it says, it says the salary of the county manager shall be set by resolution to council, adopted by affirmative vote of at least a majority of its current members, shall not exceed the salary of the district attorney, nor shall be lower than 55% of the salary of the district attorney. So my motion is that the acting county manager be paid 55%, lower than 55% of the salary of the district attorney.
Okay.
That's the entrance level salary for a acting county or county manager.
Okay.
Second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so you have a 55%?
Mr. Chairman, what would that figure be?
Well, the district attorney's salary is in the $190,000 range. 55% would be close to $100,000. Mr. Griffith, take that, and Mr. Haas, did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. 55% would be in the $100,000 range. Okay? Roll call on the amendment.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
Ms. Sedman, can you hear Ms. Lawrence? Her seems to be frozen. I don't know if it is or not, but seems to be. Ms. Sedman?
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haugh?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
On the amendment, yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Ms. Sedman?
She's having technical difficulties here, I'm working with her at the moment.
Okay, let's give her a minute, then. Would you ask her to call in, maybe?
Doing so now.
Thank you.
Hello?
Ms. Sedman, we're voting on an amendment presented by Mr. Griffith, seconded by Mr. Haas. The salary for the acting?
Sheila, mute your tablet or your PC speakers there.
Okay. I don't know where it is.
Just turn down the volume if you're on your tablet.
Okay, got it. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, the salary for the acting county manager would be 55% of the DA's salary, which is approximately $100,000.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, could you repeat the amendment?
Yes. The amendment by Mr. Griffith, seconded by Mr. Haas, was set the salary for the acting county manager to be 55% of the district attorney's salary, which we, in the area of $100,000. You're voting on that amendment, please. Ms. Sedman, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. What is your vote for that amendment?
I didn't hear the amendment.
55%.
Sheila, we're still getting feedback from you. I removed you from the meeting because you're speakers.
Okay.
I'm going to remove you again, and you're on the phone.
I'll be on the phone, okay.
For right now, at least.
Okay, Sheila? Are you on the phone?
Hello?
Hello. Ms. Sedman, the amendment is 55% of the district attorney's salary.
Okay.
Which is approximately $100,000. You're voting on that amendment.
Okay. So Ramilda, if, in fact, it was Ramilda, she would not be losing any money?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Lawrence, did you get that?
Yes, Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay, now we're voting on the motion. Designate the acting county manager, Ms. Ramilda Crocamo. First, motion by Mr. Schnee, seconded by Mr. Perry with the amendment. Mr. Schnee, Mr. Perry, you okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGinley, on the question?
Yes.
On the amended, on the amended motion, I don't, I don't believe that Ms. Crocamo is the right pick for this job. I would rather see Mr. Haycom as the pick. That would be my motion, if I was able to make a motion, hopefully I'll get that chance. I don't believe, although I think Ms. Crocamo should stay in the Office of Law, I think there's been a lot of missteps along the way that would not be appropriate for her to sit in the county manager's job. But most importantly, I feel the same way as Ms. Howe, that now we will be appointing someone to the Office of Law. And it just seems like more revolving chairs and more shell games, that I think the people recognize that in the county. I think we should put somebody different in there, not the county solicitor, much like we did with Mr. Pedry. I think Mr. Haycom is qualified, I think he's a good choice, and I think we would not have the problem with a division head leaving a position, and it would make things a little less troublesome, if in fact, we continue with the motion for Ms. Crocamo. I think maybe we should make a motion to make sure that the person who, if in fact, we pick a division head, that they have to resign their position as a division head first, or as a consequence of accepting the job.
Why?
Well, I disagree with your statement, Mr. Griffith, that the office laws make a lot of missteps. I think the office law's done a very fine job.
Well, we'll be voting on one right after this motion.
Well, that's fine, we have this motion first. Roll call, please.
If I couldn't, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas, go ahead.
If I'm not mistaken, the divisions, division heads serve at the pleasure of the manager, correct?
Everybody in the executive branch does.
Right. So when we have a new permanent manager, I mean, there could be a possibility that division heads will be reappointed or reassigned, correct?
That would go to the manager to make those decisions.
With a new manager.
The only thing you have to do is come back with confirmation with the division heads. Roll call, please.
Just to clarify, because, because, I mean, if you have a new manager that steps forward, you have an acting, for example, an acting division of law head, then the manager has to reappoint or refill that permanent position anyway, correct?
That would be up to the manager.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Perry, you said yes, correct?
Yes, 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 yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Absolutely not, no.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haugh?
No.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
I just want to say that I do agree with what Ms. Howe said about taking someone out of the position that they're already in. So I do agree with that, and I'm going to say no.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Six yes, five no.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinley, just to be clear, do we need seven votes, as we do, to appoint a manager?
Well, we don't, we use a simple majority. If you look back at 2016, we had a similar situation. The vote that evening was six to four.
Thank you.
Number 12, motion to hire a law firm for the DA election decision, Ms. Radel? Ms. Radel?
So, on behalf of the committee to seat outside council for the DA election decision, we're presenting you with two law firms that interviewed with us last week, Tucker Hull and Stevens and Lee. So I conducted public interviews and gathered some additional information that was for the best of this afternoon. Tucker Hull is a law firm from Arkansas, Pennsylvania. The attorney that interviewed us, was with us, was Attorney Chadwick Nay. And not president, but would also be working with Attorney Schnee, was Attorney Tucker R. Hull. Their hourly rate, which I was getting confirmation, because they had just said 250 an hour, $250 an hour each, as well as the paralegal Tara Rivera, whose hourly rate is in addition to 150 an hour. Their proposed budget ranges from an initial $7,500 to $12,500, and another additional $8,500 to $12,250. That's if it goes before the Commonwealth Court, and then potentially another $11,250 and $16,250 on the high end, if it's necessary to file a petition for allowance of appeal and potential litigation before the Supreme Court. So those costs are all broken down in the information that was sent to you earlier. Stevens and Lee is a law firm from Scranton, Pennsylvania. The attorneys that interviewed with us were Attorney Peter J. Adnizio, Judge Thomas Fanabki. Their hourly rates for them are $250 an hour and $395 an hour, respectively, with completing most of the hours, aside from arguments, as you can see in the budget that was provided to you. Their proposed budget does not include the cost of an appeal, but they did offer, upon request, to provide plus, and the range they provided was $16,425 low end, $21,205 being their cap, with the potential... with the potential reduction in those hours if the Board of Election files an answer instead of preliminary objection. So, our committee is recommending that counsel chooses the law firm of Stevens and Lee. So, that's Attorney Peter J. Adnizio and Judge Thomas Benaski. Their interview is available on the website for anyone who would like to listen. And their resume and letters were sent in our agenda packet. They're a local law firm, easily accessible, and provide experience of Attorney Peter J. Adnizio. Judge Tom Benaski is impressive, and I believe it's warranted in this matter. Also, in their interview, they stress the importance of a preliminary injunction as time is of the essence. They have experience working with home rule government, election law, and specifically statutory interpretation. So, I believe all the necessary information has been provided to counsel via email or in your packet. And again, we're just recommending the law firm of Stevens and Lee.
Ms. Radell, you go make that motion?
Yep. I'd like to make a suggestion, use Stevens and Lee as our outside counsel.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Ms. Radell?
I'll second.
Ms. McDermott, does a second. On the question?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Mr. Griffith.
Could we please make an announcement that the people that are using their phones could mute? Getting an awful lot of noise on this call from people who are on the call as citizens that do not have their phones muted. There's, there's a list of people on this call that do not mute their telephones. They need to be done. If, if we could click mute all, I'd be more than happy to mute them all. Because it's unfortunate that we don't have people on this line that can keep their phones quiet while we have our meeting. I, I, I would hope that they would do that as a courtesy to this counsel as we conduct our business. On the question, I have some concerns.
Let's make that an option. Everybody here, what Mr. Griffith indicated, if you are not participating in the meeting, we would ask that you would mute your phone so that we don't get any feedback, which would allow people to be able to hear clearly what's being said. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Griffith, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. McGinley. I appreciate it. Uh, and, and I know Jared will jump in here, star six to mute. Thanks, Jared. Hey, um, so, on the question, my question is with Stevens and Lee is there's a pretty big dis, uh, marking between the two firms. I, I, I see the first one says 22 hours and 28 hours. And the one from, uh, I believe Chadwick Schnee is, is different on the amount of hours that he feels that will take. That's, that's my first concern. But, you know, I think, you know, I sat when the committee interviewed. I was a little bit concerned about the fact that this committee, this special election committee, has met twice. And there has not been an office of law person in the room when you folks were holding your meetings. Not one time. Yet, we had an executive session, and the office of law insisted that they be at the executive session. But they were not in this meeting both times. I have some concerns about that, why, why that didn't happen. And we were interviewing two attorneys, two law firms, by the way. So, I have, have one concern with that. But the, the concern that I have is that I think this other Chadwick and Schnee is, is a, a less expensive firm at $250 an hour. And, and I think they're just as qualified. I think they're giving us the same amount of legal research and drafting of briefs and support. But I, I just need to caution counsel is that we're in this position because we ended up with two opinions from the Bureau of Elections, not for any other reason. We should have just let Mr. Butera's opinion stand. And then it would have been no problem, and whoever wanted to challenge that opinion would challenge it. But what we, what we ended up with was the office of law getting two opinions and forcing the Board of Elections to choose which one they wanted. And the Board of Elections should not be put in a position to decide on which opinion is the better opinion. That's what we have an office of law for. But that's what we ended up with. So, now we have two opinions. So, now counsel has to come in and try and figure out which one's the better of the, uh, which, which attorney we're gonna get to cost the county upwards of $21,000 plus. Because the argument that I'm having here with this issue from Stevens and Lee is there's nothing that says what happens when the Board of Election appeals. So, if this thing goes to, to the court and the court rules in our favor, the Board of Elections can appeal that decision. And I'm, I'm wondering if that is, in fact, a case that is going to happen? Is if the Board of Elections, will the Board of Elections appeal the decision of the county court of common pleas when they give a, a opinion on this case? I, I'm concerned about that because that cost the county more money. The fir, that's the first problem. The second problem is when we were drafting home rule, one of the things that Mr. Hagerty and Mr. Morelli and myself and a bunch of others on that study commission were worried about was the fact that we had row offices that were always suing other row offices. That was the big issue with creating an office of law. And that was the big selling point for this whole charter thing. And, you know, all that consternation about, you know, when you got the recorder of deeds suing the sheriff, and then you got the sheriff suing the controller, and the controller suing somebody else. That was what this was all supposed to take care of. And here we are today, having a lawsuit against another county entity, which is gonna cost this county council $22,000 on the high end. And we don't even know if that's a guarantee. I'm gonna say this will probably end up at $50,000 by the time we're through with it. But that was what was supposed to be taken away from this county government when we, in fact, opened up this whole home rule charter. And now we are seeing that it didn't take anything away. We have the same thing that we had before under county commissioner and row offices. So, I have some concerns about what we're doing here. I really think we should seriously go with the lower, lower cost, uh, firm, Tucker Hall. I don't like Stevens and Lee. They were bond counsel for Luzerne County back when it was commissioner days. And I believe they were the same ones that gave us the swap agreement for the one debt service that we had to, uh, do over. Uh, I just, I just have some concerns about Stevens and Lee as, as the attorney. So, I'll leave it at that. And, uh, you know, that's my, my opinion is that we go with the lesser Tucker Hall.
Other members of counsel?
Yes, Sheila.
Go ahead.
I really would like to recommend Stevens and Lee. Sometimes you get what you pay for. Judge Tom Benaski is, is formerly a, not only a federal district court judge, but one that was put at the appellate level of the, the Third Circuit. That is very high, under, it's only underneath the Supreme Court. His decisions, I've seen him throughout, not only his law practice when I was on an opposing side, and also, um, uh, my daughter interned for him. He's absolutely heads above, I think, most lawyers. And most lawyers would probably agree with that. So, I think that it's not the money here. Also, I just don't think the other firm had the same amount of breadth and experience in terms of dealing with these issues. So, my recommendation is Stevens and Lee.
Thank you. Other members of counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. I just want to thank, I just want to thank Sheila for, for her insight. It means a lot, because I didn't know anything about either one of those firms other than what I read. Thank you for your input.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, it's Linda Haug.
Go ahead, Ms. Haug.
Um, well, when the whole subject, uh, came up, you know, my, my, um, feeling on it, the whole matter, is that counsel does not have standing in this. Counsel is not a victim here. And, um, I, I think that we appoint a board of elections, and their decision on the election, they had made an informed decision. A majority of them voted. They had a quorum present. A majority voted, and it was a valid vote. And they listened to both legal opinions, and they made their decision. I still do not believe that counsel has a standing in this. And I think this stands to be at least a $25,000 waste of time. But as someone already noted, I think it, it may end up being more like $50,000. And for what purpose? So, I will be voting against, uh, either, uh, either party because I disagree with the entire process.
Thank you. Anybody else on counsel?
Mr. McGinley, it's Kendra.
Go ahead.
I just want to, just want to mention that, um, we did ask the question in our interviews, and I don't have the exact notes in front of me as to what the response was. But both, um, law firms think that does have standing in the matter. Explained why. I don't have the, don't have the notes in front of me, but they did both, um, answer that I think we have standing.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, Mr. McGinley, if I could reply to that. I believe our own solicitors said that they did not think that we had standing in it, which just proves the point of why lawyers exist. Um, and certainly, if you're interviewing law firms who are going to take the business and make the money on, on a case, they're gonna tell you that they can make a very good argument for us having standing. That is, in fact, what lawyers do. They represent the client and the position that they want the client, um, that the client wants them to advocate. So, while I respect the fact that they feel they can make a case for standing, you know, everybody's truth is different. So, um, I'm still voting against it. Thanks, anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. McGinley?
Wait a minute. Anybody else on counsel?
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, Steve.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, you know, we wouldn't be in this position if, if our own internal lawyers, you know, weren't conflicted themselves and put us in this sort of precarious position to make this decision tonight. You know, quite honestly, I, I think, um, although Stevens and Lee has the experience, this is uncharted territory since it is, you know, a, a new law. It hasn't been tested or tried in court yet. I think there needs to be some more clarification. Unfortunately, we have to be a test subject because our own attorneys couldn't agree internally before presenting this to us in two different manners. And, and quite honestly, I would be in, in favor of Chadwick Schnee over Stevens and Lee.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley?
Wait a minute, Mr. Griffith. Anyone else first? Go ahead, Ms. Griffith.
Okay. And the other question that I had, and I, I did run this by, uh, Ms. Radell, is there's been some campaign donations given to candidates by, uh, Mr. Adnizios. And I, I assume it was, was the father, I guess. It just says, uh, Peter Adnizio on the, uh, page for campaign donations to the candidates for judge this, this year, which would be, you know, I, I don't know if that's a conflict or for, uh, the attorney for Stevens and Lee or not. But there was some, uh, pretty substantial campaign donations made by, uh, Mr. Adnizio. So, I'm just concerned about the conflict on that matter. Uh, I, I think there's a, there's a, there's an issue with that. So, I won't be supporting Stevens and Lee.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Okay, this is on the motion to use Stevens and Lee, correct?
Correct.
Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Edmond?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry?
Sorry, muted. Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley, have we, I'm sorry. Have, have we decided who's gonna pay for this? Is it coming from counsel's budget?
Uh, I think we, we will have information on that going forward, Mr. Griffith. But that'll be decided by counsel. Okay?
Okay.
We're now open for public comment.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raabo speaking.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, for the past several months, we've seen a lot of things, you know, being proposed in the name of the betterment of this, of Hazelton and the Hazelton area. And I just am bewildered and, you know, I just don't understand how somebody can say with such passion that they're for improving the city of Hazelton and the Hazelton area, and then their actions are to reward a political class or some contributor. Which I thought, you know, when I ran in 2015, I thought the charter and I thought home rule, when it was being debated, discussed because of the five-year anniversary, or the, almost the five-year anniversary. And every election cycle, everybody asks about, you know, home rule, what do you think of home rule? And, you know, you read the recommendations by the Home Rule Study Commission, and you read number two, "The recommended charter creates more opportunities for citizens to serve in county government, provides for greater representation throughout the county, limits the influence of big-money political contributors, and prevents the establishment of an entrenched political class." Well, what we've seen tonight, that flies in the face of what I just read. Okay? And then, you also have number seven, which is even better. "The recommended charter ends the insidious practices of nepotism, cronyism, favoritism, and requires appointments and hirings based on public notice, merit, fitness, and qualifications." And this is the best part. The best part is, for far too long, Luzerne County government has served as a vehicle to provide patronage jobs to relatives, friends, and political supporters. And then, at the end of it, at the end of that paragraph, it says, and this is where I love this. "At a time when Luzerne County government should be a shining example of meritocracy, it is instead often perceived as simply a bureaucracy of the well-connected." Wow. What a revelation, because tonight just showed that. Not only in the developed, for the LURDA, but also the acting county manager. So, for those of you who voted for the acting county manager, which I like Ramilda, I think she's a fine person. But do I think she's qualified? Absolutely not. Um, I think that we need to have-
Thank you, Ms. Raabo.
Yes, I'm finishing up, Mr. Chairman.
Please, now.
I would like to say that the counsel needs to take caution and take heed, that they need to follow a process that instills confidence in the public in terms of selecting the next county manager. Thank you.
Members of the public?
Mr. Manta?
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
Hi. I, I, I have to echo the sentiment of, of, of all of what Mr. Raabo said. I love Ramilda as a person. I think she's a very, very, very good attorney. Matter of fact, I've known her quite a long time. She is the, the best in her position that she is. And, and she would be more of a, of a, a positive for the county if she was in that position and would hire someone outside the county, uh, or hire someone else besides that. It, it just, Ramilda is, is a very intelligent person. She is a very smart person. She is a very just person. As a manager, the moxie that you have to have as a manager and, and the understanding of, of non-political favors and non-political agendas is really what is, is the key situation for this whole thing. It's a political conundrum if you keep on hiring people in, in a position like a county manager as far as attorneys. I, I just, they're, they're very smart people. But you have to have somebody in there as a manager. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Other members of the public?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Ms. Crocamo.
Yes, I'd just like to take a, a few moments, uh, to thank everyone, and being appointed as acting county manager is an unexpected honor for me. No matter where I traveled, uh, no matter where I lived, uh, Luzerne County was always home. And it's a part of me that makes me me. So, I want all of you to know that I will be steadfast in my commitment to make Luzerne County a better place to work and play and live. And, um, I'm grateful for this honor. I also like to take a few moments to, uh, talk about- like to take a few moments to talk about and speak to Dave Pedry. I first met Dave Pedry, I was the mock trial coach for MMI, and Dave was the lead counsel for Bishop Hafee High School. He was a senior in high school. And he was extraordinary. It was, he was so good that I turned to one of the faculty from MMI, and I said, maybe we can slash his tires before the next competition so he wouldn't have to show up. But I want to say something on behalf of all the assistant solicitors. Dave, we were with you in trying times, the pandemic, when buildings were blown up, when a coworker passed away who was very dear to us, we stood with you, and we celebrated all your achievements, and there were many. And I'd like to say that your greatest achievement was restoring the courthouse to its magnificent and deserved glory. You were the caretaker of that building, and you took care of it for future generations. And someday, years from now, there'll be young kids walking in that courthouse, and they'll know that Dave Pedry was here.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for adjournment? Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Still move, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Haas, for a second?
Second, Chris.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions? Unheard, motion carries. It's now eight fourteen. We'll reconvene with the work session at eight twenty-five.
McGinnley, you are muted. Just a reminder, we had some issues with feedback.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's eight twenty-five. A call to meeting order. We've already done the pledge of remembrance silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
What, you muted me, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes, present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Hauck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
She's joining on her iPad. She should be on in a few minutes.
Here, here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinnley?
Present.
All present.
additions or deletions? Motion to adopt agenda?
Some of, Linda.
Ms. Hauck, do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions? Unheard, motion carries. We'll skip over the budget reports till the end, if we may. We're going down to number two, discussion regarding resolution authorizing county manager to execute a right-of-way agreement between Luzerne County and Transcontinental Gas Pipeline Company, LC. Who's going to speak to that?
Good evening, members of counsel. This is Eddie O'Neill. I can speak to this subject briefly. This is agreement from Williams Pipeline, who is in the process of doing a pipeline expansion project through parts of our area. In this particular spot, location in Dallas Township, there is a parcel of land that is owned or held by the county, and there is a small corner of it that you can see in your packet where they are planning or proposing to run the new pipeline, and they are seeking an easement for that small portion. They have provided us a proposal for that, which, as you can see, again, in your packet, well exceeds the market value for that particular piece of property and a, you know, comparable easement agreement. I have Mr. McCluskey, Mr. Patrick McCluskey, who was with Williams Pipeline, I believe he is on the line with us. If there are other questions that counsel has to ask that he may be able to answer, I believe he is available to do so at your leisure.
Okay. Questions for Mr. O'Neill or Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, sir. This is Patrick McCluskey from Williams.
Okay. Questions for, like I say, Mr. O'Neill or Mr. McCluskey? Any counsel member?
Mr. McGinnley, I have one quick question. I'm sure it's probably easily answered. How does that, that property that's highlighted in red on our map, is that any, and maybe even Leanne can chime in and help me with that, is that any of them that we are discussing for the Pugh twenty-some properties that are in that, and how will that affect those properties surrounding it, that right-of-way?
I believe that Mr. McCluskey can answer that, but I believe they have, they have secured easement agreements for the adjacent properties. Patrick, if you could speak to that, please?
Oh, Mr. O'Neill, I find all the properties that surround this property?
Yes. Have you secured agreements with the adjacent properties at this point in time?
No, we haven't undertaken wide-scale acquisition of right-of-way. It's been on a very base, intend to start that later here. We have completed all of our surveys. We've made application before regulator, the federal energy regulatory. But this, you know, this property obviously is landlocked, but all the properties surrounding it, so this, any impacts to the property won't, it won't affect the neighboring property, properties. We've talked to all property owners along the whole project span, or acquiring rights in the upcoming months.
Other questions?
It's, I don't know if Mr. Dan Reese is on, maybe he could explain or answer the question that Mr. Griffith asked about the properties that the Pugh's are interested in or the other county-owned properties. Dan, are you on?
Yeah, he is on.
Okay. Can you answer that question?
You can hear me, right?
Can't really hear him.
Mr. Reese, we can't hear you very well. Would you speak up and speak into your microphone, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to, but that is one of the properties that the Pugh's are interested in purchasing from us.
That is one of the properties, okay.
So I would assume, you know, the county, if we, if we sign this right-of-way, we get that amount of money, and if we sell the property, the right-of-way goes with it, and the person who purchased it will just, you know, know that the right-of-way is through there. I don't know if there'll be any residual coming in the future. I don't know if the pipeline does know that. Does that help, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, Lee, and that's very helpful. Thank you so much for clarifying. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Schnee?
Running of that pipeline, are you telling me with that property, the county's being compensated?
Yes, for the right-of-way, the county's being compensated.
Before a sale?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Someone else was trying to speak, I think?
Yeah, this is Patrick McCluskey again from the, from Williams.
Go ahead.
It would be a, yeah, it would be a one-time payment to the county.
Yes. Okay. Yes. Okay.
Yes, right-of-way agreement would be recorded of record.
Very good. Thank you. Moving down to number three, discussion regarding resolution requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority. Who's going to speak to that?
Eddie?
Mr. O'Neill, are you?
Yes. Um, I'm sorry, I was, I was going through this, this agreement with the figures. I didn't know if council wanted those figures repeated.
Multimodal grant?
The multimodal grant is for Ransom Road in Dallas Township, Franklin Township. We have applied for this grant in, in, I believe it was last year's fiscal period, and were denied, and it includes funding in order to do resurfacing, mill and overlay with the addition of a bicycle lane.
Okay. It's just a request, an application, correct? There's no?
It is just an application. That's correct.
All right. Questions for Mr. O'Neill? Okay, number four, discussion regarding ordinance amending a 2001 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County 911. Mr. Swetts and Mr. Rosenkrantz?
I'll let Mr. Rosenkrantz go first.
Okay. Mr. Rosenkrantz, you have the podium.
Hey, can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you're coming through loud and clear. Thank you.
All right. This is for $400,000 in CARES Act funding that we received at the end of 2020, and it was not put into an expenditure line item due to the timing of the deposit, so we're requesting that we have access to the expenditure authority for this and use a portion of this money to offset the under unbudgeted expenses that we spoke about at the last presentation regarding our P-25 digital radio project. So this will be used for the Friedland Tower site, the construction costs there, and other costs associated with the P-25 digital upgrade, and will give us the opportunity to start shipping away at the unfunded budget expenses.
Okay. Everybody hear Mr. Rosenkrantz? Any questions for Mr. Rosenkrantz in that regard? Well, I think that funding source is a good source. Mr. Rosenkrantz, I know you're talking about, I think, 1.8 million potential overrun there, so.
Yes, sir.
This will give you a start on that.
Yes, and if it's appropriate, I sent an email yesterday afternoon. I don't want to cause any alarm or surprises, and I could certainly put this on a future work session agenda, but I was away on vacation and it was miscommunication between the resolution. I was requesting another 600,000 that we have in unencumbered funds and the 911 funding that I'd like to add to this. So again, if it's appropriate, I'd like to add it on here, or I could add it at a future meeting.
We'll add it for next work session?
Sounds good.
You know, we can add it in to your number once we get each of them approved, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Number five, discussion regarding ordinance amending the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County probation department. Mr. Heimar, are you on?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As indicated in the documents submitted to council, the funding is necessary to support two critical areas with these courts, the county diversionary court program, the treatment court program, and the family court area. The diversionary program is in great need of completing some private meeting space, and we're building out a testing center for participants in the program, as well as training and development for our case manager positions within probation. In addition, we've directed some more resources to support the family court division at the courthouse.
Questions for Mr. Heimar? Thank you. Moving down to number six, discussion regarding the resolution committing a local match for the state operating assistance for Luzerne County Transportation Authority. And I believe you have that in your packet, page ninety-three to ninety-six. This is something that we get to request annually from LCTA, and then following will be the Hazleton Transit Agency, which is the next item. Questions in regards to that? Okay. We're down to number seven, Hazleton Public Transit, similar request. Obviously, the numbers are different because the operation is different, volume of transportation, so that the information is there.
Question, Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Is this the same situation about non-contribution from the surrounding counties?
Let's see if Mr., who should be on here, Mr.?
Ralph Sharp, I am here.
Go ahead, Mr. Sharp. Did you hear the question?
It is, it is the same. Every year, we do go out to the surrounding counties and ask for assistance also with no luck.
Yeah, I, thank you.
I think if I correct, Mr. Sharp, you're talking about roughly 20,000 and 10,000, something like that, from the two counties?
The other, the other two, I don't have those figures in front of me for this year, but it's, one county is under, under 10,000, and the other one is just about 15 or so, maybe now 16,000.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Sharp?
Mr. McGinley, it's Mr. Griffith.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Um, I, I just, I have a concern, and I voiced this concern before. I voiced it as a citizen. I'm voicing it as council member. I don't understand why we cannot make Hazleton Public Transit part of Luzerne County transportation system. This is really, this is over and over. Every time we have this, this budget allotment come up, it comes up, the same questions come up. How come we can't get any money from surrounding counties? And, and we get the same answers, and we get the same, the same response. When are we going to address the issue that PennDOT put in their study that they said that the Hazleton Transit should become part of LCTA? And if in fact they're not, then why don't we just create a Hazleton Transit Authority? And let's just be an authority. You're already self-sufficient, so I don't understand. Hazleton doesn't give any money. Hazleton City doesn't give any, they control your budget. Hazleton City controls your budget, and we contribute to that. I don't understand how difficult it is to put a transit system. I mean, your transit system is one, is wonderful. It runs well. I see your, I'm up in Hazleton every day. You guys do a great job. Why are you not working with LCTA to co-mingle your resources to make it a better system all the way around, get more funding? You've gotten money for a new intermodal center from the state. I mean, you know, I don't understand.
We are, we, we do currently work with LCTA with, we help them with needs, and they help us with any needs that we, that we may need. So we are working together with fairs and other things. We're, we're just, we're not one agency, but we are working with each other. Just, you know, we are.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that, and I, and I don't doubt that you are. I, and, and I think that's a good thing for the folks in Hazleton as well as LCTA. But you could do a lot more if you were joining together. PennDOT studied back in 2012 or 2010 when they gave the initial study. They identified that that would be a way, a much better fit for Hazleton Transit to join with LCTA. If it's an issue of having a say, certainly make changes to their bylaws that says there's somebody from the Hazleton Transit must be on the board. I, I mean, I don't understand how difficult this is to co-mingle this resource into one, and instead of Luzerne County giving a local match of 189,000 to Hazleton and giving it another match to LCTA. I mean, this is just insanity over and over. We do the same thing over and over, expect a different result. How, what, what has to happen? Is that, has to happen through you guys, or does it have to happen through LCTA?
Well, I think it has to be a joint venture, but with, with the way, the last, how can I say this, the last studies that were done, Hazleton is, is a different animal than, than LCTA or Colts or anyone else. We're non-unionized. Our, our, our service is contracted out. So for, when, when LCTA and Colts was looking to merge, and Hazleton was, was, was made known that we were going to set aside, if you, if those two would have merged, but they did, see, it would cost money, it would cost more money for us to come into the mix. Now we'd have to be unionized, paying more money to the drivers than what they're actually getting now. And our, our staff is so small, our, our staff, there's a staff of four in our, in our agency, that we do, we do everything. We, we were numerous hats, take care of everything. It would actually probably cost money for us to come into the mix.
Well, it wouldn't cost you any, it wouldn't cost you extra money, Hazleton City, because you'll be joining with LCTA, and your resources would increase, and your grants would increase from the state, your, your, I mean, your monies would increase.
Well, the way that the consolidation, we would have to, it would have to show a savings in order to, to benefit with the, the local match funds in, in, in that respect.
Well, PennDOT did the study on it, and he said it worked. So I don't understand why we didn't follow through with the study. I mean, I'm, I mean, I understand, I, I'm not going to go anywhere with this conversation. Obviously, we've had this conversation for years and years and years ad nauseam, and, and it doesn't seem like anybody wants to budge on cooperating to make this thing happen. So, and, and, you know, at the risk of putting the, the ridership at risk by not giving funding, which is really not the way to handle it, I mean, we don't want to penalize if people use your service, because that's not fair to the people that use the buses. But we really need to do a, a better job of trying to co-mingle this service. I, I really believe that the LCTA and Hazleton Public Transit can get together and make that happen as the recommendation of PennDOT, and, and then Luzerne County would only have to give one match. So, I mean, we're not going to get anything from the other counties. We obviously know that. So I would, I would implore the, the Hazleton Public Transit to work to that, to that resolve.
I, I will, I will, I will speak, I appreciate that. I will, it's, speak with our mayor and see if we can get something, start talking. How's that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Mr. Chairman.
If I could, Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Schnee first, and then Mr. Haas, please. Mr. Schnee?
Thank you.
Uh, myself and Mr. Perry had the privilege of the groundbreaking out at the intermodal. They have showed us architectural pictures. It's going to be a tremendous building. It's a big shot in the arm for the city of Hazleton. But we're told by the Pennsylvania Transportation Director, I mean, when the county, if it wasn't for the county, uh, starting this off with their donation of $300,000, this doesn't get off the ground. And the officials of Hazleton, from the mayor on down, thanked myself and Mr. Perry. So actually, $300,000 from the county turned into a $25 million project, which is going to be first-class, second to none. But again, those officials expressed their thankfulness of what the county did for the city of Hazleton with that donate, with that contribution.
Thank you. Mr. Haas?
Yeah, I, I, I really, I appreciate the business model that Hazleton Public Transit has. I, I think it's, it, it seems like it's cost-effective. However, let's see the numbers. Let's see them. Walter's exactly right. We go around this year after year. We were promised that the, the other counties would come on board and pay that match because they, they enjoy those services. So I think we have to really look at this funding stream and say, well, look, maybe we need to, to cut the, the amount that is, it should be supplied by these other counties, and that will force the powers that be to the table. Because, you know, by state statute, we only have to give out one match. Actually, we only have to give out one. So why don't we keep on having the same discussion with absolutely no results year after year? We had an opportunity to, to team up with Lackawanna. We know that fell apart, but for whatever reason, Hazel never came to the table, and I think that would benefit all the ridership. That's what it comes down to. The, when you consolidate, it's going to save money, and it's going to benefit the ridership. So I don't know what we have to do, but we have the purse strings here. So I, I think we have to play some hardball to get some results. You know, we just saw this last time with that, with that Lurda down there. I don't know why it was so difficult for Luzerne County to have the same deal as Hazleton City. So maybe, maybe the shoe has to go on the other foot this time. But I, I, I would suggest that, that we need to see results here. If we're going to pay this amount of money from the, the entire county to support a localized service.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to number eight. Number eight, the Hidden Heroes Community Plan. Mr. Vog, did you submit this?
Yeah, so actually, Ms. Radel brought this to County CARES, so I'm going to let her discuss it.
Yep. So a few months ago, I was connected with a woman named Molly Rosenkrantz, and she brought to my attention the Elizabeth Dole Foundation and the concept of what a hidden heroes community is. So the purpose of the foundation and the Hidden Heroes Campaign is basically just to recognize and provide resources to military and veteran caregivers. I also have the mission statement here. So the foundation was founded in 2012 by Senator Elizabeth Dole, and their mission is to strengthen and empower military caregivers and their families. So after speaking to Ms. Rosenkrantz, I presented the idea to the County CARES Commission, and they were really receptive to it. Molly spoke at our last County CARES meeting, and she shared her story and struggles with finding resources here in our county after her husband was wounded in combat. So in adopting the Hidden Heroes Community Plan, we would essentially just be pledging to make resources readily available to people who would need it. So this could be through listing them on our website, making sure Mr. Spagnola's information is really accessible, and there are some other ways listed in the resolution as well. So if you guys have any questions, Mr. Vog, Mr. Perry, myself, we can try to answer them for you. And I just want to also recognize the rest of the County CARES Commission as well. They were really receptive to the idea. They added some things to the discussion. They got the resolution together, and we got it over to us on county council pretty quickly. So I think this is pretty important, and it's the first step in just showing military and veterans, as well as their caregivers, that they're supported here in the county.
Thank you. Questions? I think it's a great idea, and I hope that we'll get solid support. We'll have it on the next agenda. Uh, founding committees, Act thirteen, Mr. Vog?
Yeah, so we met yesterday, and then we're going to plan to meet in two weeks as well.
Okay. ABCs, Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry, you're muted.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. We expect to have a meeting in July. I don't have the exact date, but it'll be coming out when I talk to Sharon.
Budget, finance, and audit. We had a meeting yesterday with the auditors. It went very well. They made a very nice presentation. Based on that meeting yesterday, they expect that we will have an audit, accounting audit for 2020 on Friday, tentatively scheduled for Friday or possibly Monday. So we will have it prior to our deadline date of June 30th, and that will be distributed to all of council. And then they will be at our July 13th meeting to present the audit and answer questions to, for all of council. Mr. Haas, legislative? Mr. Haas, you're muted.
Yes, sir.
Legislative, Mr. Ross?
Well, there's nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Real estate, Ms. McDermott?
Yes, we will be having a meeting tomorrow at two, and just to let Mr. Griffith know that next one- that next one will definitely be in the evening. We were having a hard time trying to get this scheduled between everyone and, um, I didn't want to cut it off too, too much longer. So tomorrow at 2:00.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Leanne.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You have some work to do there right now, so that's great. Strategic initiatives, Ms. Hock?
Nothing on strategic initiatives. The code review, um, we did finish that, uh, section six and so we have to schedule another meeting to work on the rest of the admin code. Um, and also you did not include the Elections Inquiry Committee on the, on the list, but, um, we had planned to meet, um, again, following the election, but it's, that's, those plans are on hold because of the District Attorney investigation at the present time.
And that's the reason why you're not included until that investigation is concluded. Then hopefully we'll have some information there and your committee can meet and review that.
Right, we, we had planned to meet, um, right after the election, but then when council passed the resolution about the, um, District Attorney investigation, um, we thought it best not to meet, um, while that investigation is going on.
Yeah, I agree. Let District Attorney's Office have their, uh, time there. The special election decision, Ms. Radel?
Yep, so we don't have any, any schedules at this time, but we met last Thursday for the interviews as we discussed in the, the voting session and, um, we have nothing scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Haas, plot of property?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Voe, County Cares?
Yes, we meet tomorrow at 6:00 and then Sunday we have our resource day in Kirby Park from 10:00 to 2:00.
Is that going to be located where the, that pavilion is, Ms. Voe?
Yeah, Pavilion Number Two.
Okay, thank you. Riverfront Parks, Mr. Haas, have you heard anything?
Heard nothing.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything, uh, which I'm sort of surprised. Going back to Mr. Swets, our monthly budget reports?
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. So in your packet is the monthly budget report. Uh, and as always, I will just kind of highlight some high level things and answer any questions via email. Anything I can answer, I will, but as in the past, uh, email is a great way to get me something where I can look it up and get back to council. Uh, as mentioned, we're working on the, the monthly reports. We'll be working towards getting the more detailed packet, uh, for the mid-year. Uh, the mid-year report itself isn't until August, but in your upcoming meeting, when you have the June, you'll get some more detailed information than just a general fund. Uh, that was one of the things that was, uh, passed by the committee. So it will be all fun, so you'll have a little more voluminous stuff to look at for the June meeting. Uh, kind of the same things we talked about. Obviously taxes are a very high number. Uh, we know that with the COVID slowing down and businesses opening back up, that the housing market, so things like pin certs and taxes and even some things in judicial are starting to pick back up that were, you know, pushed behind or completely shut down last year because of the pandemic. So we're looking at that. Uh, we're also looking at some of our revenue numbers that we don't think we're going to make. Uh, we know that one of those is the investment number. Obviously, the investments aren't the percentage that it was in the past. So we'll have some recommendations for, you know, working with the acting manager of Melda, uh, to get some things on track. Uh, here's our additional revenue and here's some of our expense shortfalls. So you have the detailed report. It's obviously many pages and it's late in the night, but I'll answer anything I could right now. And as always, anything you want to email or follow up, I'll gladly do that. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Swets?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Yeah, and I, um, I sent everybody an email on Friday regarding use of the COVID funds and that's going to require change in the budget. And it's the proposal to use the, the first half of these funds that we, we currently have in account to, um, get that money as quickly as possible to the people who most need it. And, um, I, I know I sent that out and some people had questions at the time, but I want to know, Mr. Swets and, and I guess Acting County Manager Prokomo too, if you could direct the Office of Law, if, um, you could help me draft an ordinance for that and then the process about having public hearings for, um, putting forth to, to council. And again, the, and I, I shared it again last, last council meeting, two weeks ago, that, um, to, for the past two tax year, 2021 and 2020, to approve a homestead exemption for the first $50,000 of assessed value for Luzerne County homeowners. And that would, I appreciate Mr. Swets getting very quickly back to me about that that would yield about $300 for the average homeowner. And again, it's, it will, um, follow all the guidelines that was in the interim final rule as well as the Department of Treasury and, um, the NACO representatives at the Me and I Tenet said it was an acceptable use. And, um, I, I think, um, my question for Mr. Swets is how would we be able to, essentially get the, get the homestead exemption from the past years out to the citizens of Luzerne County? What would the process for that be? Cause I think the, um, that's, that's a big function of this. How can we get the money to the people who most desperately need it?
Well, Mr. Haas, as you said in your email that you sent, uh, based on our current list, so that's the 2021 list, that's not the 2020 list. There's from the Assessment Office, there's approximately 75,000 people in the county that have the homestead, or that's how I came up with that dollar amount. I guess while I was not on that meeting and agreed it's acceptable use, uh, the dollar amount that I had quoted, and again, realizing that some houses may not get the maximum $50,000, but just to get you something quickly of $23 million for a year. I understand we got 112.8 million and that we're trying to help residents, but I'm not sure that that can't be identified as trying to reduce taxes. Again, I, I'm all for using this money. I would think you would start with that list. I think that's an easier process than your second idea, which again, I didn't say I was against either idea, which the unemployment talks about. You know, unemployment just doesn't encompass COVID. There's things that could be, you know, a lawsuit, a separation, a slip and fall. Uh, to get such a list and then verify what's COVID related, I think is a bigger list than your first one. So I would start with, you'd have to have the 75,000 residents, uh, that are currently signed up. We'd have to make sure that they were signed up last year. And if the majority of council was going to do that for two years, uh, you know, then it has the mechanics of how do they get a $300? Is this county accounts payable running checks? Is this a credit? If it's checks, have people moved? Uh, have people changed residences in the two years? So I don't think I have all the specifics, but I'd start with the list of here's the current homeowner for 2021. And then we'd have to kind of work out how we would get the, the funds to the residents if that was the council majority's view.
Yeah, exactly. That's, I, I'm very interested in the mechanics of the whole thing because, um, it, it is an acceptable use per the, the internal final rule where we're a 603 section. So we can actually give, i- if you want to call it that, um, a, a tax rebate. 602 of your state, you can't use it for that. So that, that is, um, the difference there. So it's an acceptable use. It's just a function of how do we really make it work? And, um, again, I fully anticipate questions from the colleagues here, but I'd like to, um, introduce it next week, Mr. Chair. And I, I would like to have that developed if, um, the Office of Law would be willing to help me out with that. Uh, we've, we had a homestead many years ago and when reassessment came through, that's when the Commissioners put that forth to kind of soften the pain of reassessment. And then, uh, council majority voted terminate that a couple of years into home rule because the state statute says you can't have a homestead and concurrently raise taxes. That, that's, that's against state law. And, um, the promise was to get it back to the people, um, within three years. And clearly that didn't happen because we're in very financial hard times. Well, now the, the, the situation has changed and the, the people in hard times are those elderly people, the people at home, the folks that own properties that have not been eligible for, um, you know, renters insurance, renters reimbursement or utility reimbursement. This really fits, I, I think, I'm making the case that it ideally fits what the, what the federal government want to do with these funds. And again, it's only, um, it only amounts according to Mr. Swets's figures of, of about 50 some million dollars, which is not even quite half of all the funds that we've been given. Um, so the unemployment compensation, it's an idea, uh, other things, I have some other ideas too, but I, I think this one would help the people who need it most in a timely fashion. And, um, yeah, Brian, if you could, um, maybe give us some, um, some more details about that at next meeting when this is on the, um, the next session, I'd, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Harry. I'm sorry.
Just a couple of questions, Harry. Um, you are absolutely sure that this is, uh, qualifies under the use of, of the COVID funds? And how do we know that that's absolutely positively right? Can, can Office of Law do some research in making sure that we are doing the right thing and not somewhere down the line five years from now, so they can, you use this the wrong way? I, I mean, you have a great idea, that's number one, but is it? Are we rushing into this here? I mean, ju- just could someone else, can we research it out? Because Harry looked, researched it, he said it looks like a good, it's, it's been supported by, uh, National Association of County Commissioners. Is that totally true? I mean, is that, are they right? That's my question, because it's not spelled out perfectly clear.
I think, yeah, actually, I appreciate that, Chris, because if you, I'm sorry.
I think Mr. Swets can answer that. When are the final rules going to be given to us, Mr. Swets?
Uh, the last I had heard was a few, as I said at the last meeting, was going to be, uh, closer to the end of July or August. Uh, I know some new rules came on after the interim rules that I just got emailed to me that I didn't even look at yet. I'm not sure that they're the final rules or just some questions on the interim rule. I think that was my question and I agree with Mr. Haas that, you know, while the pandemic is ongoing and the sooner the better, but on the other hand, we don't want to do something with the interim rules versus the final rules in case there is any change. So let me confirm that we have the final rules. When we have the final rules, whether that's at the next work session or before, I'll let council know. And I think, as Mr. Perry said, uh, you know, budget and finance and probably someone from the Office of Law should go through and concur that's a valid use and that before council votes on it. I don't think there's any harm in having it in a work session. So we can put something together for the work session if the chair deems that fit.
Yeah, I'll say if I could, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So, um, if, if you read the interim final rule, I, I, you're, you're right, Chris. I mean, is anything 100% sure? Well, it's, it's the federal government, so nothing's ever 100% sure with, with those people. Cause they, they read stuff before and they pass it before they read it. You know how that goes. But if you read the interim final rule and the designation for counties and local governments were a 603 status as opposed to a, the state, the state cannot use it for tax rebates. They are a 602 status. And secondly, I, again, I, I kind of laid it out in the email, but if you look at the Department of Treasury link that I, I sent council and the manager and, and the Office of Law and Brian, um, it's, it's an acceptable use on the, on the treasury website and they're the ones making the rule. Um, and then lastly, again, the, the sweetener is that the, the National Association of Counties, the ones who are, are tasked with providing the answers and direction, just like this. So it's 100% acceptable use. The, the last thing I want to share is that other counties have already begun dispersing funds and, um, taking on things. So, um, I, I just think we need to continue to move this forward. We can certainly ask questions. Again, I, I, I fully expect to have this on the, the next work, work session, introduce it formally and then start having public hearings so we can really help out the folks.
Anyone else?
Um, Mr. McGinley, I have a question for Mr. Swets.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffiths.
Thank you. Uh, on our, uh, budget sheet under the last page for checking account balances, it shows the general fund at 173,622,000 or 522,000. What line item is the, uh, extra money in? Cause it's obvious like that, it's not supposed to be in the 100 fund, right?
Correct. So what we had to do was we have to move money as council arranges, or actually approves, I'm sorry, I said arrange, actually approves things. So what happened was the, the guidance from the states is it has to be a fund that we already used before, which is the general fund. We don't want to keep in the general fund. Council approved not just the 11 million, but the 40, you know, the, the half of the 114 million. But we couldn't do anything until 15 days after council approved those items. So that was why some of these I wanted to try to get on the voting session because knowing a normal protocol, by the time we go to work session to an introduction to a vote, that's six weeks that it's not sitting in the fund that we want to designate it. So there, there is funds and there has been funds that were in the general fund for a month that need to be moved out. They don't belong in the general fund, they belong in a specific purpose fund, but we can't just move them out to, uh, PNC or another bank until council gives us direction. So that's why I've been trying to get these things on the, on the voting session to be introduced and then wait the proper days after council approves it so we can move it. Uh, also, we usually do our investments a little bit earlier. It wasn't the fact of us not getting the investments out because we didn't care. The rates weren't where we wanted them to be and haven't gone up. So we will be investing money. It is probably about a month later than it was last year. Uh, our focus was on getting people back in the building and getting on the audit out the door. So we will be investing, last year we did $30 million. So there'll be money coming out for investments and there'll be money coming out to go to the other funds, but we had to follow the proper protocol. And we can't use a new bank account, we can't use a new bank account when we get, uh, federal or state money. It has to be an existing bank account that they've used before.
Okay, so you're just, I mean, you have to wait the 15 days for the ordinance to become effective. That, that's probably the problem, right?
I don't know, I mean, yes, we have to wait, we have to wait the proper days until after council approves it. Uh, once that happens, then we can move the money toward things that are, uh, special purpose like the 56 million of the 112 million. And then the other part, as I said, we'll be moving money for investments. So we have some money, but it needs to be transferred.
Yeah, it's because we, we did approve an ordinance for the, uh, 56 million to go into a 125 fund, right? And, and that'll happen probably, and this report is May 31st, that's probably why I won't see it, right? Just yet, right?
Correct. And, and again, council's last meeting and I'm not sure which ordinance you reviewed when or did their final approval for without looking at all the minutes. But as you know, the meetings are two weeks, uh, sometimes three weeks. Uh, so if it was two weeks ago and you approved it, we can't do it until tomorrow. You know, our, our view is always the 15 days counting the weekends. I'll confirm that with the Office of Law and as soon as we can move the money, we will do that.
All right, very good. Thank you so much for that information.
Okay. For public comment?
Uh, Mr. McGinley. I, go ahead, Bob. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. McGinley, I had something else, but I'll let Bobby go first.
Go ahead, go ahead, Walter.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Uh, Mr. Swets, the other question I had is I saw your reply on that $100 fee. Uh, and, and hopefully at some point along the way, we'll set up a, uh, an ordinance to make that happen because that would be a budget transfer. Uh, I'm more interested in the question that hasn't been answered as to who authorized, who authorized that $100 fee? Cause I know now we're getting it because I raised the issue, but we weren't going to get it. Cause I don't understand, that was in April, uh, the, because they postponed the April's, uh, upset sale. So I don't know where they got the money from unless they did it in, uh, uh, last year under the judicial sale. So, but we'll, we'll discuss that further on. I'll send you an email, maybe we can answer it through email, okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I, I gladly answered the email. I did see your follow-up question. I would say if we're going to do it as a budget, uh, ordinance, which I think is the correct term, we just need an expense either in that fund or if council wanted to put it in the reserve. Uh, I agree, it's extra revenue that wasn't budgeted, but we need an offsetting expense to make the budget balance. So we need both sides and we can work on that.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much for your help. Mr. McGinley, Steve Urban?
Uh, I, Mr. Snee's next and Mr. Urban.
After.
Snee, go ahead.
A question to the Chair. That money that we're talking about for the homestead, that would only exist, that money is exhausted from COVID.
That's correct. Yeah, that's, that's money that, uh, you know, we have not budgets coming in from the federal government due to the passage of the American Rescue Act. So once that fund is, uh, used up, that money would be exhausted and unless council would put something in the future budgets, uh, that would terminate the homestead exemption at that point.
And if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That's why, that's why, Bob, I'm only proposing for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, the COVID years. I, I, I really hope we're coming out of it and hopefully by the end of this year, we'll get really things back to normal. But that's, that's the acceptable use. You know, um, it, it doesn't cover just an, an infinite amount of homesteads. So again, the communication piece would be the, this is for mitigation of, of, um, harm done by COVID to households. Um, that would be, I'm, I'm just expecting that would be in the letter that would be enclosed with the, with the rebate check that the county would send out to people. And I know Mr. Swets talked about sunsetting it. I, I, we don't have to sunset it because it's only for two years. And there's, it, it would yield less than half, it would let, yield less than the amount we've already been given by the federal government.
Okay, uh, Mr. Urban, you have the floor, please.
Uh, yes, regarding that $100 fee, I mean, like, like, it, it's still a burning question as far as who authorized it, you know, how it's You know, how it sort of was created and by whose authority? And then, I, quite honestly, I would rather see that money refunded back to those individuals that paid it. You know, I mean, I don't think we should be collecting it as revenue since these are public auctions, which are open to the public. Um, I don't think we could charge an entrance fee for a public auction on a tax sale as a county. Um, I don't know if that's the law or not, but quite honestly, I think we need to refund the, the money to those individuals that already paid into that uh fund. I don't think we need to be creating a line item for it and taking it in as revenue. In essence, it's like a tax that we're collecting. Um, so that's, that's number one. As far as acceptable uses of, of the COVID money, I think, you know, maybe we should think also along the lines of utilizing that money for more permanent usage, like possibly separating stormwater and, and uh, the stormwater sewer lines, you know, creating a separate system for rainwater and, and sewage, which might help in the long run for uh people's sewer bills, since the treatment plant wouldn't have to treat as much uh, you know, wastewater uh because of the mix. So I think, I think that's also one of the acceptable uses. I think it would have a better and a long-term impact on the community versus a short-term shot in the arm. Uh, I know, you know, like, Wilkes-Barre City, I think, wants to reduce garbage bag fees and things like that. Those are things that are like one-time uses. I think we, we need to think more broader and, and look at something bigger picture-wise that could be longer lasting. Uh, because this is like one-time money. It is an acceptable use, I think, to separate sewer water from rainwater. And I think it would have a bigger impact on people's household bills if we can go down that road.
Thank you.
I just respond, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Who's speaking?
It's Mr. Swets. I just want to respond to Mr. Urban for two seconds.
Go ahead, please.
So, Mr. Urban, I would agree that whatever council wants to do with that $100, we just, uh, you know, I did not have the discussion for the $100 fee. We just had to check that I was going to deposit, so it didn't go bad. And whatever council wants to do with that 19,000 plus dollars uh as a whole, we'll gladly do. And again, you know, there's quite a lot of money and quite a lot of worthy projects. And I think that'll be a discussion we'll have in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Members of the public?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, can I say one thing?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Perry.
Sorry, sorry about that. I just wanted to uh, uh, thank uh Mr. Haas for a pretty darn good idea. And we worked that out, look at it. And uh, I, I'd like uh Mr. Urban's idea about the stormwater too. Uh, I mean, actually separating the, the water. I think that's a great idea too, that's long-term. I like it. Good ideas, fellas. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Rabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Rabo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to that, we just said what was just uh bantering around about the stormwater. Uh, I would like to notify council that uh Harrisburg has just introduced legislation to utilize 250 million. I do believe I said this at the last meeting or the meeting before. $250 million out of the $7 billion allocation that the state is receiving from the American Recovery Act for the MS, for, for the Chesapeake uh requirements for the NSPDS permitting for the separation for stormwater and sewer. So if the state is utilizing that money, I don't see why it would be, again, it would be eh not an eligible use for the county to do the same thing. So uh, I would just wanted to make that clear. And also, as far as the bus for Hazleton Public Transit, nobody has defended Hazleton Public Transit and the ridership more than me over the fa- uh, over the past 10 years, almost 10 years. So um, I would like to say that since the terminal is being built as we speak, the 22 million dollar terminal, and I think that Mr. Griffith and Mr. Haas uh bring up a very valid point about, you know, there needs to be a choice now made between, you know, it, it's come time where Hazleton should, you know, at least enter into discussions with the county to see how, you know, at least shared services or some kind of other, more shared services can be done. I think that's very fair to ask. Now, with regards to moving forward with the uh finding out of, of, of the new county manager, moving forward, I would like to point out, Mr. Chairman and members of council, it says under the Home Rule Study Commission's recommendations, it says that the uh manager, uh, it starts at the top with a manager who must be degreed, experienced and have professional abilities, qualification, preparation and training to perform the function of county manager. And then it ends on number seven. The sweeping changes in hiring and appointment required by the recommended charter will, in the judgment of the government service, the government uh Study Commission, foster a government where merit and competence are rewarded, poor personnel practices are eliminated, and county government is open to the best, brightest and most fit candidates. I hope moving forward that the new, or whoever applies or is appointed to the manager search committee will keep that in mind. I think that uh tribalism, uh, I'm finishing up, Mr. Chairman. Tribalism, tribalism has no place, ne- neither does cronyism in our home rule government. Thank you.
Other members of the public, please.
Mr. Chairman, Jason Carr, Salishburg, Pennsylvania.
Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
Hey, thank you so much. Uh, I just wanted to make uh council aware that Elite Revenue Services does administer the judicial sales in Lehigh County. And uh, there is no charge in Lehigh County. There is no $100 charge to participate in any sale judicial, upset or otherwise. Uh, it's extremely confusing as to why uh Sean Chamany of Elite Revenue Services is uh bilking the public for the $100 to purely participate uh for properties that are uh in distress and that need immediate attention. It definitely um uh ostracizes some people who uh every last dollar, what that means to them uh should be kept for, for their own purposes, not for, you know, Sean's pockets or, or David Pedri's. Uh, I thought uh Mr. Mr. Krakamo's uh tribute to David Pedri tonight was very telling. Uh, as she has known David for many, many years, decades, uh, it goes to reinforce the, as Mr. Rabo has put, the tribalistic mentality of Luzerne County. And at the end of the day, when you bring your little children into the courthouse, you could tell them, it's really not what you know in Luzerne County, it's who you know. And that was reinforced today with the vote to place uh Krakamo in the uh position of interim manager. So congratulations on the six of you that did that.
Other members of the public.
As well, Mr. Uh, Mr. Griffith, I wanted to let you know that I think you got the same sense that I did, that Mr. Pedri was being uh defiant in his answer regarding the timekeeping machine that you use. Uh, I, my company uses the same uh timekeeping system. Uh, it's one of the worst that you could possibly use because it can be manipulated in multiple ways. And uh, if you would like to talk about it offline, I'd like to give you some insight as to what you want to look for uh as to where there may be some impropriety with employees not coming to work and being paid for it. So I'd be glad to do that as well. Thank you so much.
Other members of the public. Mr. Manta. Go ahead, Ms. Manta.
As far as the stormwater goes, whatever council can do or whatever monies that are available to stop the collection of Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority from the people in Luzerne County, we have to do it. Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority has got in such power in the county that I believe they're more powerful than the county council. I mean, there's people that are, are being elevated into jobs because of Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority and because of this stormwater. And please, if, if anything that anybody can do or say, Harry had a great idea, the government should stop this collection of this stormwater fee because of the fact it's, it's just illegal. And there's no money that's going to the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. There's no relief in the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. For four years, I've been talking about the same thing, and it's, okay, next, okay, next. Somebody has to have enough chutzpah to stop Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority. Please believe me, the, 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 the money that's being thrown at this Chesapeake Bay with Cartwright and, and, and uh, uh, the rest of the politicians, you might as well throw the money in a big bag and light it on fire. You'll get some heat out of the money that they're throwing at the Chesapeake Bay. It doesn't need it. Thank you very much. Next.
Other members of the public? Okay, I have one, a, a couple of announcements. And then we'll have one comment from uh Manager Pedri, and then we'll ask for adjournment. An announcement is, uh, we will be meeting for public interviews of the manager search committee next Tuesday, the 29th of June. Attentively, we're gonna start around 5 o'clock. There'll be an advertisement in the paper indicating the time and place, et cetera. And then we're tentatively, we're gonna schedule a special meeting for Thursday, July 1. And for the only sole purpose of selecting members to the search committee. So we can get the search committee uh interviewed, appointed and get them up and started so that they can start with their work as defined by the charter. Andrew Petty, you have the last comment, and then we'll ask for adjournment.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I just wanted to say to uh the members of council and the members of the pub- uh, of the public is my, in my, believe it or not, my last meeting here um as, as county manager, um, just what a privilege it has been to serve in this capacity. I said, when I took this job um in 2016, five years ago, five, you know, uh, s- s- short and long years ago, that public service is a privilege, man. It's an, it's an opportunity to do good things and having the ability to work in my home county, where I choose to raise my children, has uh, has been the highlight of my career. I want to thank all the council members. I want to thank every single council member who I've ever worked with, from the first county council uh that was put into play all the way to the end here. Uh, whether or not we agreed on everything, I think we all had, came from the same place, which is, we're trying to do the best thing for the county. Uh, sometimes I think politicians get the, get a bad rap and some, some of them get a bad rap, deservedly so. Uh, but you members of county council, put your names on the ballot. And what that means is that you're doing this for good. And you want to be something good for the community, you want to be part of something, you want to move the ball forward here in Luzerne County. And as I said, we didn't agree on everything, but we agreed on many things. And we got so many things accomplished here. Uh, so I want to thank you for your service and thank you for putting up with me over these past five years. I want to thank every single county employee who I've ever worked with. I mean, there's too many here to name, uh, but you don't know how lucky you are to have such a dedicated and hardworking workforce of the 1,400 people who work in Luzerne County over 32 separate departments. Let's never lose sight of the fact that Luzerne County is a county of over 320,000 residents and the entire state of Rhode Island fits within Luzerne County. All of those services are provided by county residents, are, are presided by county employees. 1,400 employees do all this different work. You know, just to name a couple, um, top of my head, who personally to me, to me is my assistant, Jen Thomas, the Rio County Manager, I call her, uh, who's been there for me from day one. My, um, obviously our grand runner, Michelle Sparich. And I, I don't want to go into every single person here, but I gotta call out specifically the division heads uh who I have been able to work with. Four division heads uh were selected by the previous county manager. Dave Parsnick, Stephen Greenwald, Joan Holgarth and Brian Swets. I was lucky to inherit each of these individuals and I was lucky to work with every single one of them. Dave Parsnick, you want to talk about, about a guy who gets things done? Dave Parsnick has been my go-to get-things-done uh person in this county, whether or not it's administrative services over these past five years. Almost every project that we have been able to succeed on is because of Dave Parsnick. Somewhere down the road, had his hands in it and had an idea to help us along the way. Mr. Swets. Mr. Swets came in as a, as a budget and finance analyst, ends up doing audits and budgets and, and look how far the audit um and the budget process has come. Um, under Mr. Swets, now the amazing amount of uh finances that we've had to be completed. Mr. Greenwald, a friend and a, and a true advocate for his clients. Uh, Ms. Holgarth, who consistently is one of the hardest workers that we ever have in the county, always wants to do better for customer service. And then also for the division heads who I was able to, lucky enough to appoint and county council appointed. First in human services, Mike Donahue, and then Lynn Hill. Lynn Hill uh has absolutely changed the face of human services in, in Luzerne County, and that wasn't an easy task. But look where we were in 2016 and where we were now in 2017 when she first came on. Mr. O'Neal, Eddie O'Neal, has done just about a little bit of everything over his timeline here. Mr. Rakovich in the prison, look at what the prison was in 2016 to where the president is. And of course, acting county manager, uh, Ramilda Krakamo, who I look forward to working with over these next two weeks uh to tie up any and all loose ends we possibly can. Uh, I said five years ago that we are now entering to act two of this government. Act one was Bob, uh, Bob Lawton and the county manager. He was taking us through the crisis, and that was done by that first county council as well, serving with Harry Haas, Linda Howe, of course. Uh, Mr. McGinley, Steve Urban Jr., those first, those first days of the county got us through the crisis. I have to think that in act two, we moved the ball forward and we, we established uh where we're going next. Uh, we fixed our financial house here in Luzerne County. We took a deficit and we made it into a surplus. Every single audit is now in the black uh that, that we've been able to work with. We've been able to deliver three no-tax increase budgets. We fixed the financial house here. The job creation is through the roof right now in Luzerne County. North Point, uh, Miracle, the Hazleton Can Do Sector, all of these different areas right now. People are dying for workers right now because there, there is job growth here in Luzerne County, which means that houses are now for sale here in Luzerne County. And that is, that is raising our numbers in the economy and that's, people are buying houses and being part of this. We had a community outreach that I've been very proud of. Brand-new Luzerne County website and of course, a Rockin' River Concert Series, which I hope to see everybody at, starting on July 13th. But a- as uh Ms. Krakamo has said, you know, whether or not I wanted to do it or not, I believe that potentially, maybe my best investment here was, is to the infrastructure, to roads and bridges here in Luzerne County, as well as the Luzerne County uh courthouse we've been able to do here. And that not only includes Eddie O'Neal pushed me to fix every single boiler in every county building and every single roof and every single thing that we can do here. And we changed out the electrical switchgear in the courthouse uh from the 1950s Frankenstein uh panel into a, into a modern one. These are all things that had to be done. Anybody who owns a house knows that an ounce of prevention saves a pound's worth of trouble. And we've done these things now, so that now act three can come into play. And that's where we are now, and this is where um I hand the ball off to the next county manager. I hand the ball back to, to county council. I'm a county resident. I'm born and raised here, this is where I'm choosing to raise my children here. I can't wait to see where you're gonna take us, because I truly feel like act three of this county, uh, of, actually this home rule government will be successful. I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve, and uh I'm gonna be right down the road in the Luzerne Foundation, so I can still do good things for the community, just maybe with less county council meetings. So I'll be here, and uh I'm looking forward to continue to help you uh and help all of us as best we can in the commuting. Thank you for your opportunities over these past five years.
You have a motion for adjournment?
So I move, Chris.
Mr. Perry, second?
Second.
Second. All favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition, any extensions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.
Everybody.